The hour of 5:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, November 11, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ohovitch. Ohovitch is present. Pritchett. Pritchett is present. Tischler.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry about that.
Excellent. Tischler is present. Verveer.
Here.
Verveer is present. President Vitterver.
Here.
President Vitterver is present. Duncan.
Here.
Duncan is present. Evers.
Here.
Evers is present. Field.
Here.
Field is present. Figueroa Cole.
Here.
Figueroa Cole is present. Glenn.
Here.
Glenn is present. Govinda Rajan.
Apologies.
Vice President Govinda Rajan, present. Uguer.
Here.
Uguer is present. Harrington McKinney.
Here.
Langkella is present. Knox.
Here.
Knox is present. Madison.
Here.
Madison is present. Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Martinez Rutherford is present. Matthews.
Here.
Matthews is present. Mayor.
Presidentonium.
Mayor is present. O'Brien.
O'Brien.
O'Brien is present. We have quorum.
Thank you. As usual, I'll remind us that we're here to do the business of the people of Madison and ask that we do so with grace and kindness and refrain from using profanity in our remarks. I will also add my regular reminder that it is a virtue to be concise and expeditious. We do have several items that will take up before the budget, but our first item is disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Then we have introductions. So let me pause and say that we are not following our normal calendar of events with respect to the agenda. Council leadership and council staff did their absolute best to have the only items on tonight's agenda be budget, however, needs must, and there are a few other introductions. So our first section is actually introduction of new business for referral without debate, under which we have two items that are printed on the agenda. And so I would entertain a motion, President Vitterver, for introduction.
I would introduce items one and two, although there's a correction on item one, and that is to add a referral to the Transportation Commission on 11/19. That was inadvertently left off.
Okay. Moved and seconded to introduce items one and two with the additional referral of item one to Transportation Commission on 11/19. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction of those two items? Seeing no objection, those two items are introduced. And with the council's indulgence, why don't we take any other introductions at this time from the floor, if there are any? Are there any other introductions from the floor? Alder Verveer?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce a resolution directing the Human Resources Director with assistance from the city clerk, Finance Director, Information Technology Director, and other city staff who interact with administrative support functions to analyze city agency administrative support needs and provide findings to the mayor and common council by June 1, 2026, on administrative support issues and resource needs and allocations, and refer to the Finance Committee meeting of November 17 and the Common Council meeting of November 25.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of that introduction? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced. Are there any other introductions of items from the floor? Seeing none. Then we will go on. Oh, Alder Knox?
Do I have to present my?
No, we're not on the budget yet.
Not on budget.
Right. So seeing no other introductions from the floor, we'll move on to public comment. And we have public comment on item four, which is the 2026 Executive Operating Budget. And our first registrant wishing to speak is Bonnie Rowe of District 11, to be followed by Joseph Keys, to be followed by Sharon Irwin. Do we have Bonnie?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the Common Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on what I consider a unique opportunity to fund a critical tool for our community. The importance of this tool really hit home when I attended a meeting sponsored by the Community Response Team, co-founded by the Office of the Independent Monitor's data analyst, and Moses. They brought in police oversight expert Joey Lapari to talk about what to look for in a candidate for an independent monitor. I want to state for the record that I think police accountability and oversight is critical and important, and I have attended every meeting of the PCOB since its inception. The few I've had to miss, I watched the recordings. But following this excellent presentation, which I suggest you all watch, was a Q and A. Curious as to his take, I asked how important is being able to review body camera footage for IM investigations. His response, and I really hope you can see this in full, if one of the sponsoring Alders is able to show the clip, he said, and I quote, "Absolutely important. I spend 60, 70 to 70% of my days reviewing body worn camera footage. It's not always the final word, but they're really key." He talked about the importance of access, and when he realized our police don't wear body cameras, he said, "Oh, your police department does not wear body cameras? Well, then that makes it difficult to get access to footage and review footage." So that would be, in my mind, one of the first recommendations from the new independent monitor, is invest in some body worn cameras. It's a mixed bag, but they're absolutely key, and I can't imagine trying to do this work today without having body worn camera footage. That got me curious, so I looked into all the US cities best known for its police oversight: New York City, Chicago, Philadelphia, LA, Detroit, Washington DC, Atlanta, as well as Austin, Texas, Memphis, Tennessee, and New Orleans. Every single one requires body cameras to be used by police officers. Here in Madison, we got the cart before the horse. We implemented an Office of the Independent Monitor without giving them the tools to conduct investigations, and maybe it shows. There have been no completed investigations, to my knowledge, of an actual complaint carried out to the end. We don't have a key tool of oversight. Of course, the community, as well as the police department, recognizes that body cameras are just one tool in the toolbox. They are no panacea. But in the words of one of the foremost police oversight experts, which the data analyst himself brought in to speak.
About 30 seconds left.
Thank you. They are absolutely necessary, and he doesn't think the job can be done without them. I urge you to consider voting to reallocate funding from the IM PCOB to the MPD in order to prepare to implement body cameras in 2027. We will then have the needed tools to reinstate an Office of the Independent Monitor that will be set up for success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Joseph Keys of District 11, to be followed by Sharon Irwin, to be followed by Erica Bach. Do we have Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alders. I'm here today to speak to the Executive Operating Budget. I support the termination of the Office of Independent Monitor and the Police Civilian Oversight Board, and redirect the use of those funds to start the funding of staff for Madison Police Department's body cameras. Historically, there has been little or no action taken by the Office of Independent Monitor with investigations. Summary reports from the Office of Independent Monitor have been late and incomplete. In any event, the Madison Police Bureau Commission still has an established process to handle public complaints. This money would be better used for staff supporting Madison Police Department's body cameras, since police body camera videos are now widely used in the courts, in news reporting, and shared between police departments throughout the inquiry. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sharon Irwin of District 6, to be followed by Erica Bach, to be followed by Barbie Jackson. Do we have Sharon?
Mayor, I don't see Sharon online.
Right. Then we'll go on to Erica Bach of Middleton, Wisconsin, to be followed by Barbie Jackson, to be followed by Robin Copley. Do we have Erica?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alders. As much as I respect the Alders of the upcoming proposal and floor amendment, I am in opposition to Executive Budget Item Number Four, because the expenditures of changing monies from the Office of the Independent Monitor to body worn cameras underneath the auspices of the MPD have several flaws at its core. It undoes the work of your colleagues, your constituents, and of legal authorities. It makes multiple Madison government ordinances would have to be changed. The MPD would have to do a department regulatory change. There are amendments and ordinances that would have to be addressed, amended, before any of these monies should be approved. It would create actually drastically more work for MPD because of MOU changes, state statutes around accountability, processes with the Wisconsin PPOA, unions. There are a number of things that, since the passage of this ordinance in 2020, have come into play in other aspects of the work that you all do. There will be a demand for information, and complaints will rise. So for the individuals that said no investigations have occurred, that is inaccurate. In fact, there is currently an open directive from the PCOB, which, again, is the Police Civilian Oversight Board, that has directed the Office of the Independent Monitor, and the data analyst, and the assistant to be able to carry forward complaints that are already in their queue. I am also quite surprised that none of the Alders proposing this change have looked at the fact that we don't have a sustainability report, labor hours and expenses. Has there been a discussion of the budget appropriations that would need to now take place for body worn cameras? We talk about not just being able to switch one part of GPR to another. We can't just move money from OIM funds to MPD, because MPD by statute and by ordinance is supposed to be independent from the Madison Police Department. So as much as I respect the Alders who are suggesting this, people, again, this is just a terrible idea. And it really looks, from the outside, as much as I respect these three individuals, it looks like cozying up to the people in power. And they have an enormous budget, and there's pressure to use it, and this is not...
About 30 seconds left.
Thank you. We already have Talent here, and Ring and Alexa, and Meta, and unauthorized sources to call this data. If body worn cameras worked so well, Matt Kenny would have used one. We still need justice for Tony Robinson. Please continue to fund the OIM. We don't want to have to make this mistake again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Barbie Jackson of District 7, representing Moses, to be followed by Robin Copley, to be followed by Kim Richmond. Do we have Barbie?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Alders. My name is Barbie Jackson. I am the Vice President of Moses, a member of its Justice and Policing Task Force, and a 58-year resident of Madison. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of Moses. Moses calls on the Common Council to approve the funding of the Office of the Independent Monitor, as specified in the Mayor's 2026 Executive Operating Budget, and to reject floor amendment number two, which would eliminate funding for OIM, as proposed by Alders, Knox, Harrington, McKinney, and Pritchett. Moses supports the ongoing viability of the Office of the Independent Monitor and the Police Civilian Oversight Board. Our mission is to build collective power to dismantle the systems of mass incarceration and mass supervision, and to eradicate the racial disparities in our community that contribute to them. Eradication of racial disparities in policing is a key responsibility charged to the OIM and the PCOB, with full participation by impacted community members. Existing disparities in policing of racial, economically disadvantaged, and other protected groups persist despite efforts to date. It is critical to the equitable safety and fair treatment of all community members to assure the ongoing viability of the OIM and the PCOB, as these entities develop the policies, procedures, and actions necessary to execute their responsibilities. The Madison Police Department Policy and Procedure Review Final Report was delivered in 2019, following a four-year analysis by an ad hoc committee established by the Madison Police Department. This committee obtained comprehensive review of the MPD by the National OIR Group of California, and a subsequent public engagement process which was representative of the diverse constituencies of the city of Madison, to ensure inclusion of those voices. We acknowledge that the startup of the OIM and PCOB has been challenged by a fraught series of hiring efforts and subsequent personnel issues. Nevertheless, the principles and recommendations made in this report still pertain. It is critical to the well-being of our community that the city of Madison persevere in its support of these developing agencies. Moses makes this call on behalf of the 22 congregations represented on our leadership board, including several Lutheran Episcopal Methodist UCC Unitarian congregations, as well as St. Paul AME, Madison Friends, Unity of Madison...
About 30 seconds left.
...Action, thank you, Holy Wisdom Seminary, and Snowflower Buddhist Saga, who unanimously approved support for the ongoing viability of the OIM and the PCOB. Please assure that viability of these critical services by continuing the funding of the Office of the Independent Monitor in the 2026 Operating Budget, and reject the floor amendment number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robin Copley of District 9, to be followed by Kim Richmond, to be followed by Maya Pearson. Do we have Robin?
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. My name is Robin Copley, and I am speaking as a Madison resident and former city employee, not as a representative of the Office of the Independent Monitor or the PCOB. I will not be available for questions afterwards. Federal police are kidnapping people, brutalizing protesters, violating every constitutional and human right they can, and disappearing people without due process to private prisons to be used as cheap labor. This all sounds insimdiary now, but it is what is happening, and it is what you will all quietly admit a year from now. The country is crumbling because the government says one thing and everyone sees another. The country is crumbling because the government says one thing and everyone sees another. Since resigning as monitor, I've been in Illinois protesting. Governor Pritzker publicly opposes the federal invasion of Chicago, but his state police are assaulting protesters after the local PD enforces a curfew at 6:00 PM. The people have no reason to trust their police departments will protect them. I know that Madison can do better. In September, the feds redefined anti-fascism, gender ideology, and immigration activism as domestic terrorism. This isn't so much dog whistling as much as dog screaming, but the Madison Police Department's Immigration SOP allows MPD participation with ICE anti-terrorist operations. Does this make the federal declaration that Antifa is Al Qaeda any less ridiculous? No. But it makes MPD participation with ICE a legally lubricated option. It provides a lens to justify arresting a screaming mother, having her child ripped away from her. What the people need is their law enforcement to come out and promise to protect them from ICE. It's what Madison expects, but I fear it isn't what the city will do. The mayor will announce this isn't who we are, the police will show this is who we are, and the council will kneecap an oversight agency rather than stand by a moral commitment longer than a fiscal year. The council created the OIM and then threatened to defund it completely. That threat has never been lifted, and it is instead used as a cudgel to circumvent the independence of the office and the board. OIM PCOB is now always considered on the chopping block. Justify your existence is a question people are radical for asking any single part of a police department, but it's fiscal responsibility to not even provide a police oversight agency with three full-time positions, or half of 1% of the police department's budget. The mission of the OIM and the PCOB is to change the culture itself, to bring the public to the table with the chief, and have a monitor in between to foster compromise, understanding, and reform-
You have thirty seconds left.
I am asking the council, doesn't break that table. Fund the PCOB, restore the data analyst position, and expand the Office of the Independent Monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kim Richman of District 16, to be followed by Maya Pearson, to be followed by Johnny Milton Jr. Do we have Kim?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, thank you. A bit of a timeline for everybody. In 2014, Alder Scott Resnick proposed creating a body camera pilot program. The Common Council at that time pushed funding to 2016 at the earliest. In 2015, an ad hoc committee on body-worn cameras was formed in direct response to community calls for greater police accountability and transparency. The City Council established the committee to study the implementation of body-worn cameras for Madison police. In September 2018, the Finance Committee adopted a budget amendment for a body-worn camera program. In October 2019, that ad hoc committee recommended a body-worn camera pilot. In August 2020, after a long study, the Quatron Center recommended body-worn cameras for a more effective and coordinated response. They were commissioned to review MPD's response to the protests, to the protest events during the summer of 2020. The Office of the City Attorney recommended body-worn cameras due to city liability and risk management. In December of 2021, by a five-to-one vote, the Police Body-Worn Camera Feasibility Review Committee voted to recommend body-worn cameras. They were commissioned to determine whether or not to implement a body-worn camera pilot. On April 19, 2022, the Common Council finally voted to implement a three-month body-worn camera pilot in the North District, excuse me, in the North District, with conditions that the policy comply with the model policy established by the Feasibility Review Committee. In the 2023 Capitol Budget, $83,000 was allocated for the pilot. In July 2023, then Chief Barnes, who had implemented body-worn cameras many years ago, drafted a BWC policy. After watching Chief Barnes' presentation on that policy, the City's Public Safety Review Committee, who traditionally opposes body-worn cameras, voted five-to-one to recommend the Common Council implement the pilot. On July 31, 23, the Police Civilian Oversight Board discussed the policy and voted six-to-two to recommend that the Common Council implement the pilot. Robin Copley, then Independent Monitor, spoke and voted in support.
You have about thirty seconds left.
April 2024, the pilot began. On November 15, 2024, then Chief Barnes submitted his body-worn camera experiment report with a conclusion statement which included, "The benefits of deploying body-worn cameras greatly outweigh the costs. Madison community members will be well-served to have an additional tool to record events with the goal of deployment in 2027." Now, in my opinion, body-worn cameras and related technologies way overdo in Madison.
That's your time. Thank you.
Why not?
Our next registrant is Maya Pearson of District 14, to be followed by Johnny Milton Jr., to be followed by Stephanie Rierich. Maya?
Thank you all. My name is Maya Pearson. I'm currently the Chair of the Police Civilian Oversight Board, but I am speaking on behalf of myself, but essentially, you know, to Robin's point earlier, we are always on the chopping block. The work that we have put in, including myself, who has been on the board for now five years, have given a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of energy to the Police Civilian Oversight Board, and it's something that I believe in. In addition to this idea of defunding us and then give money to the police department, which already has an extensive budget, that they could purchase if they would like to reallocate their own funding to body-worn cameras is a possibility. To take something that civilians worked very hard on, Alders worked very hard on, the people that continuously show up to do this work despite stipends and whatever else, and the folks that have an investment in the work to try to work with police department to have better policing, and, you know, to have a chief, a current chief, that, you know, supports police oversight and the civilian oversight board, to defund us, I think is just a mistake on the city's part. I would like to just make sure that folks understand, since we are talking about timelines, yes, 2013, the federal court settlement mandated NYPD pilot of body-worn camera programs to have to go into effect. And the cities that, the Independent Monitor person that came in to speak that was mentioned earlier, he spoke about large cities, way larger than Madison. In addition to, if you fast forward, Obama, President Obama, again, community policing plan in 2015, which we were also created, or started doing the work, and because of that, we were created. There is a training that I took at NACOL, which is the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, talking about the broken promises of body-worn cameras. I implore everyone to go to the Campaign Zero, which is www.campaignzero.org, and look at their information-
About thirty seconds left.
There is, there is no concrete, and there's also publications from Poe Pubica, also from Cornell and other scholarly articles talking about body-worn cameras doesn't necessarily mean that communities will be more safe. You know, police overwhelmingly have control of the release of body-worn cameras. Sometimes they, they charge a large amount of fees for people to get access to them, and that they're not always readily-
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registrant is Johnny Milton Jr. of District 9, to be followed by Stephanie Rierich, to be followed by Amelia Roy Comauer. Do we have Johnny? You should be able to unmute yourself.
All right.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Alders. As a black man here in America, living in Madison, born and raised out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, I experienced racism to the fullest. Back when I was growing up, going to high school at Rufus King, it was often, if we were not in the right neighborhood, the officers would put me and some of my friends inside of a paddy wagon and give us a paddy wagon ride. Often, inside of that paddy wagon was people that was less fortunate than us, and not the most hygienic people around. Having said that, we have overcome some obstacles with the police department, and I just want everybody here in the room to try to understand both points of views that have been brought up, but also why not equip our officers with the right technology to do their job. I have worked with several officers. I've been in the Madison area for over 20 years, my family and I, and they need technology to do their job. If we had had technology back in the day, a lot of this would not be happening today. In addition, I think the use of body-worn cameras can also help out with the training of future officers, so that they can see some of the mistakes that might have been made out in the field in the real time. So I ask, are we putting our eagles and pride at the table before we come up with a resolution for this? I just want you to think about that. Thank you, and everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Stephanie Rierich of District 6, to be followed by Amelia Roy Comauer, to be followed by Devin Snyder. Do we have Stephanie?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I currently serve on the Police Civilian Oversight Board. I was appointed in January this year, and I'm also speaking against Amendment Number Two. And I chose to serve on the Police Civilian Oversight Board and also do some of the organizing work toward having independent oversight, because I live in a neighborhood that seen seven people shot and killed by police officers when they were experiencing mental health or substance issues. And I've also really seen a major difference with police response and how effective and humane or not it is, depending on the culture of the police department, the personality of the person who shows up, and the kinds of training they receive. And the City of Madison has spoken and organized for several years to get to where we are with a strong civilian oversight mechanism, and we have a very serious board. We saw a PCOB really find its footing against a lot of obstacles, including not having staff and needing to do a whole hiring process. We are hiring an interim independent monitor. We have a strong PCOB, and civilian oversight and working with the police department and other partners to institutionalize a more humane police department benefits all of us in a much longer-term, more forward-thinking way than body cameras. And when you're talking about a tool to allow someone to have everything they need to invest, investigate police brutality or whatever is being investigated, that needs to be investigated by a person, and we would like to see changes that prevent, prevent instances of police brutality in excessive force. So please reject Amendment Number Two and continue to fund the Office of the Independent Monitor and PCOB. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amelia Roy Comauer of Reno, Wisconsin, to be followed by Devin Snyder, to be followed by Eugene Chrisler. Do we have Amelia?
Hi there, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. While the entirety of the Police Oversight Board meets to select their final candidate for the Office of the Independent Monitor, Alders Barbara Harrington McKinney, Isadora Knox, and Joanne Pritchard are at the same time sponsoring a floor amendment to the 2026 Operating Budget to defund the Office of the Independent Monitor and shift the funding to the police department for body cameras. They want to kill three jobs and independent oversight of the police for a small coupon to spend on body-worn cameras. Everything about this amendment and how they are going about it makes the argument for why you absolutely should not fund body cameras over a mechanism for civilian oversight of the police. Just like Chief Barnes disaster of a body cam pilot, this behavior and movement of Alders, McKinney, Knox, and Pritchard lacks transparency, integrity, honesty, and objectively impartial evidence to support it. It is also that lack of transparency, integrity, honesty, and objectively impartial oversight in camera studies, usage, storage, and redactions, and sharing with the public, that overshadows their benefits and destroys trust between police politicians and the public. Is camera footage helpful? It can be. Any independent monitor in a city that welcomes true independent oversight and runs on integrity and transparency would say so. But so few cities operate with that integrity when it comes to independent oversight. And that integrity must be there, or what we get is endless footage of federal cops breaking laws every day and nothing being done. But this isn't new to us. We've seen it time and time again with city and county law enforcement, and the most widely viewed footage of officers killing unarmed citizens, after which police unions fight for impunity, chiefs look the other way, courts deliver that impunity, and all that is left are the neighbors and the loved ones that then circulate the internet in perpetuity. Or in the case of Matt Kenny killing Tony Robinson, key pieces of footage are locked up behind the blue line that is reinforced by the city machine and may be accessible, maybe accessible through subpoena power. Rather than support this amendment, please acknowledge that the OIM has yet to function without a weekly, if not daily, attack of some sort. Covert through city infiltration, overt, lack of real help, like assigning an attorney who used to work for a police union that tried to destroy civilian oversight-
You have about thirty seconds left.
It has been so persistent and pervasive that we advocates have yet to come up for air to take account of it all and tell the story, but we will. That which has been shared thus far with professionals at the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement has elicited a conclusion that the City of Madison has one of the most toxic and unsupportive relationships with independent oversight than any other that they are aware of. And that makes me sad to say, and I wish it wasn't true, because people died for this mechanism to be created-
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Devin Snyder of District 10, to be followed by Eugene Chrisler, to be followed by Michael Glawaki. Do we have Devin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Devin Snyder. I currently serve on the Police Civilian Oversight Board, and I just want to start with, studies show that police are more likely to use excessive or fatal force in areas with high crime rates, economic disadvantage, and low-income populations, more specifically communities of color. The disparities in policing in communities of color have caused distrust between the side communities and the police. This is why the Office of the Independent Monitor and the Police Civilian Oversight Board are essential to my and other people of color's livelihoods. I am speaking to state my opposition to the budget amendment being introduced to defund the Office of Independent Monitor. This police oversight agency provides functions that are essential to achieving racial and social equity in this city. The creation of police oversight agency in a city has been shown to reduce racial disparities and arrests and officer-involved deaths. The OIM needs adequate funding to continue researching racially biased policing to assure its erasure, not defunding. Alders should recognize the value that the OIM and PCOB bring to people in the community, especially people of color who have a history of mistrust and mistreatment with police. It is important to rebuild this trust and foster an environment where people of color can feel heard, feel protected, and feel safe from police harm. We have the power to eliminate racially biased policing. Time after time, brotherhood protects brotherhood. It's time to promote a culture where police can be held accountable. It's time to create a culture where people of color don't have to fear for their safety while interacting with police. I spent my last Saturday interviewing candidates for the interim OIM position, and here I am on Tuesday defending the budget. As a PCOB member and as a black male, I respectfully request voting against the budget amendment to defund the Office of Independent Monitor. These offices are vital to the livelihoods of people of color. Thank you for your attention to this consequential matter.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Eugene Chrisler of, it's like Yellowstone, in 53711, to be followed by Michael Glawaki. Do we have Eugene?
Mayor, I don't see Eugene online.
Okay. Then how about Michael Glawaki of District 16?
Hello, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alders. I appreciate this opportunity to speak tonight, because this civilian oversight board, the Independent Monitor, does not have the proper tools to monitor the police, because there is no body cameras, police worn body- Police worn body cameras are becoming standard equipment, not only across Wisconsin, but across the nation. So this is a standard for evidence to help eliminate racially based, racially racially biased policing. Police worn body cameras have proven in many cases where they were, um, evidence for illegal or unwarranted shootings and use of force. So they're certainly very helpful for such a, such a function. And I would say that the Independent Monitor has no record. It's, it's literally just what people say, which is the least reliable form of evidence. And as you all know this, or, or, you know, attorneys and judges will, will attest. In the court of law, I would say that, um, eyewitness evidence is the least reliable because everybody's got a different, a different version. And what's going on without the police worn body cameras is that we don't have the data. We don't have the actual information that we could use to monitor police behavior. And while Chief Barnes has been thrown under the bus after getting recruited to Seattle, and I would say his conclusion after reviewing the data from the pilot project, his analysis is that he would have this year made the acquisition of body worn cameras a priority for the 2026 budget. I'm quoting him here right now. In 2026, I will make the acquisition of body worn cameras a priority for the 2026 budget and will work with the city council and the mayor's office to identify funding opportunities for the full deployment of body worn cameras. The city of Madison currently qualifies for non-competitive federal grant funding of approximately $900,000 as well as other funding opportunities, including private donations, private foundations.
You have about 30 seconds left.
The opportunity to use these body worn cameras will, will help. And, you know, because the Police and Fire Commission is independent, you know, I would say that we can start with what has worked. Thank you.
Our next, uh, well, let's, let's circle back and see if we have either Sharon Irwin or Eugene Chrisler.
Sharon is here, Mayor.
Right, then Sharon Irwin of District Six.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so appreciate that. Um, my name's Sharon Irwin. My grandson was Tony Robinson. He was shot and killed by Matt Kenny in 2015 in a stairwell. And you're wrong, the man who talked before me, that's not just the only thing you have as eyewitness. You have forensics, you have ballistics, you have options that are, that are not just somebody's word. It's the actual facts. Here's my point to you. Yes, there's been some difficulty with the OIM, OIM office. There's difficulty now, not really understanding why. Because the truth is, it was needed. Are body worn cameras needed? Could possibly be. Would that have changed the story for my grandson? It might have. But that doesn't mean you put this little bit of 500, less than $500,000 of their budget into body worn cameras. It's going to cost a whole lot more money than that. This just taking away from this because there's been so many issues, don't allow that to be. I trust that Madison will find the right I am to move forward in the interim and the actual one. You have to let it be. I've been waiting for a long time. I've been here since the beginning. I've been to all these council meetings. I've spoken to you. This is on the level of somebody who feels it. There are many of us waiting for this to be accomplished. And we're just getting stone walls left and right because this is designed to help people like me who cannot get the help from a system who is afraid to look. I'm asking you to let it go forward. Don't take that money away. Not yet. You haven't given an opportunity to work yet. Just hear that. I've been waiting. Can you wait just a little longer? Pulling that money is not going to prove anything. It's definitely not going to support the body cams because you're going to need a lot more than $400,000. You can't even do a sort of program with that. The cost of running just the IT part of it is going to be a, a tremendous.
You have about 30 seconds left.
You, I'm just asking you, as a citizen of here who have lived my life here, feeling that the possibility exists for justice to come through, for the truth to be seen, and you gonna get ready to take that away? Please don't. Not yet. Not yet. Not yet. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll try one more time for Eugene Chrisler.
Mayor, I don't see Eugene.
Great, thank you. Then those are all the registrants I have wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of the registrants on Item Four? Alder Madison.
Oh, just a doc.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have questions for three speakers. The first one is Maya Pearson, if she's available.
Can we get Maya back, please? Go ahead, Alder.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Oh, excuse me. So, uh, Maya, thanks for joining this evening. I guess my, I just have one quick question. Were you engaged previously to the amendment becoming public about the amendment to remove the funding from the OIM and PCOB for this position?
I was not. No, I was not.
Okay. Thank you. That's my only question for Maya.
All right, let me just pause Alder and see if there's anyone else who has questions for Maya. Alder Vitter.
Yes. Uh, Chair Peterson, um, can you, or Pearson, excuse me, can you tell us, um, how many current investigations are open with, um, the office and the PCOB? In process?
So current, yeah, so there were, um, prior to the previous Independent Monitor's departure, I believe there were 11, um, that were being worked on. I believe there are 13 to 14 that are in the process. Um, that includes those 11 that I mentioned.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Uh, yes, Maya, you mentioned that you had, you were not engaged, um, earlier in the week or last week or the week before regarding this amendment. When did you find out about it?
So I found out, um, via email from, um, the current person who is, um, Erin Hilsen, who is the HR Director, who is, um, working as, I guess, the interim interim for us at the time. Um, I found out, I believe, Sunday, um, about the possibility that, um, that the amendment may be coming forth.
So you found out on a weekend, on a Sunday, just two days ago, and you're the Chair of the Committee, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm also a, uh, constituent of Alder Knox's.
And you were never contacted and asked for your opinion or your thoughts from Alder Knox, Alder Harrington McKinney or Alder Pritchard, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I'll, oh, I have a question for Maya as well.
Go ahead.
Sorry about my voice, folks. So, um, Maya, I just wanted to ask you, are you at all regularly engaged with your Alder person?
Does that negate the, like, I guess I'm asking why you're asking that question? Have I contacted you on multiple occasions? Absolutely.
When's the last time you contacted me about that issue?
Um, is it in regard to the body worn cameras?
Any issue.
Any issue, I don't think it's pertinent to this discussion.
Okay, I, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Do we have any other Alders in the queue for, oh, Alder Pritchard? Is it for Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This is for Maya. Maya, since you're the Chair of the Committee, uh, do you have or have you done an evaluation, a summary evaluation, one that would be, um, available to the general public? I know that there's information that, privileged information that you cannot talk about, but at the same time, when you think about the Office of the Independent Monitor, are there strengths, weaknesses that you've been able to identify? And if so, what have you done in order to correct those?
How, how much time do I have, um, Mayor, to answer this question?
Uh, as, as long as you need, um, but I, I would repeat my advice to be concise.
Yes, thank you.
But there's, you, there's no time limit.
Okay, thank you so much. So can you read the, repeat the question one more time? Are you asking just for a possible analysis of the strengths and areas of growth for the office?
I'm asking for, have you done, have you conducted an evaluative summary of the office, the office that you chair?
So I don't chair the office. I chair the Police Event Oversight Board that oversees Independent Monitor, who is our only employee, who then oversees the Office of the Independent Monitor. And so in terms of working with board members to find strengths as well as, um, areas of growth and analysis of the office and its operations, absolutely. We have had to, um, we have talked at length. Um, in addition, we have been working on building other, um, analysis reports. We have not finished our annual report, which is not due until the end of the year. Um, in addition to that, um, we are in the process of hiring our, um, interim Independent Monitor, um, who we will work, um, with them to ensure that there are, um, analysis about the office and areas of growth, um, and what strengths exist currently. So on one hand, yes, we have had conversations and have started the process. On the other hand, um, there is not a concrete document, if that is what you are looking for, um, that is publicly readily, readily available at the moment, but that is something that we have discussed at links, um, to do with the interim Independent Monitor and the future Independent Monitor. Does that answer your question?
Not quite. What I'm asking is, can you provide, uh, like an abstract cases, situations that you, that came before you and not necessarily divulging names or anything like that, but can you provide some information that would let me know, you know, what this group is doing and what were the overall strengths and what were the weakness, weaknesses that you were able to identify?
I appreciate that question. You can definitely send me the question later at a date, a later time, um, so that I can make sure to prepare information for you. The issue is that you're asking me for very pointed, um, direct things that may be in a report, um, and an analysis. Um, what I also find interesting is that you're asking me questions that you have never posed to the civilian oversight board at all. Um, I have not heard from you as a new Alder about the work of the Police Civilian Oversight Board. Um, and so it's to ask for the analytical data, um, in just a, uh, just a question on the floor, um, I think is, is somewhat out of bounds to me. So unfortunately, you can definitely send me an email and I will try my best to get the information for you.
Would, would it be possible? You know, there are many, many ways to defend or justify what it is that you're doing. For example, if you've done this and this was the result, are you able to say, you know, what kinds of things you've been able to do? Right now, you, the people, people have spoken in defense of maintaining the Office of Independent Monitor and there's people, there are people who have spoken against it. But then I'm asking then, in defense of it, what kinds of things have you done that would justify the continuation of the OIM?
So what I would say is that in inaugural group, um, as a board member, um, when we started the office, we got it going and we hired the Independent Monitor. The Independent Monitor at the time had worked very diligently on, um, creating a intake, essentially to take in, um, to, uh, take on, uh, cases, um, and have, um, and then created MOU with the police department that has been working, um, started a office from scratch. And so you're asking me, like, what have we done in five years? The fact that we are even in a place where despite our funding constantly being, um, be up on a chopping block, we have been able to start taking, um, requests from the public and, um, cases as well as having the MOU, as well as analyzing the information that comes from that, as well as hopefully being able to finalize some of those once we do have an Independent Monitor in place to do that for the public. What else have we done? We've put many hours into, um, creating the structure for the Police Event Oversight Board. We've put a lot of effort and time working with ABBA who trained you all from Mosaic, um, who are also trained us in being public and making sure that we are able to go through that process, creating our own standing operating procedures. We have also worked on, uh, making sure or working on making sure that there is some kind of standard procedures between a office at an Independent Monitor as well as, um, as well as the Police Event Oversight Board. We're also working on, um, the five-year plan for the police department, reviewing that and giving, um, feedback. We've also been meeting with, um, we will start actually this month or next month, start doing police trainings individually, um, all the members on the board, doing ride-alongs. Um, what else, uh, could I say that we have been doing? Really trying to understand what policing in Madison looks like, not only as a civilian who are impacted by policing, but also understand what police are, um, trained in, what they go through when having to respond to things so that we can be able to do the actual work and get to a point that we can say, hey, these are things, trainings that you need to make adjustments are. These are recommendations for, um, different standard procedure office. These are recommendations around, um, ensuring that there are critical health supports and, um, when someone is having a mental health, um, crisis instead of sending just an officer. These are, these are, these are all these different things that, um, we would like to get to. But at the same time, to ask that question, you're asking an office and a board who, of civilians who are volunteering their time to work with an office from scratch to create this mechanism to support the community. And I know I've spoke about this before. Most civilian oversight boards in the U.S., it takes time. Some of them have been around for 30 years, some of them have been around for 10 years, some of them just getting started. But to ask like, well, what have you done? There has been a lot of work that has been done and I would implore you as a new Alder to go back and watch our meetings, come to our meetings and listen to the work that has been done. Ask maybe, send an email and ask like, hey, I want to get to know this. There are Alders that sit on the council currently who are very engaged with the Police Event Oversight Board and they can tell you about things that we have done and some of the work and some of them come and defend us when we are constantly being on a chopping block. And so hopefully that answers your question.
Well, you know, I'm gonna, as they say in that movie, I'm gonna let it go, let it go, let it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Matthews, questions for Chair Pearson?
Yeah, um, so I know you just kind of mentioned a lot of the achievements of the board and the OIM. Would you be able to speak to, um, from your point of view on the board, if the OIM has ever had a calendar year where it was fully staffed and fully funded?
No, not together.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Glenn for Chair Pearson?
Yes. Hi, um, can you describe the community input, input process that led to the OIM's creation and how it was different from this floor amendment process? that led to the OIM's creation and how it was different from this floor amendment process?
Do you mean the creation?
Of the PCOB.
Almost a decade, okay. So I would say the difference is that when, so when the working group was created, where the recommendation for the creation of the ordinance for the Police Civilian Oversight Board and the Office of the Independent Monitor, that was, that was a group of community members, alders, organizations, and folks really invested. I think, I believe there were attorneys from the law school at UW. So it was really a collaborative effort to say like, how can we respond and support the community? And show up for them in a way that, essentially to some of the points that some of the folks mentioned in their public comments, have another mechanism to protect people and to also work with law enforcement to ensure that they're doing their job and protecting people. And so what, for this amendment and the collaborative nature of that, there, I don't, I don't know what the collaborative nature of this amendment, I don't, I don't know if it exists. What I will say is that throughout the budget process, there have been sponsored amendments at the Finance Committee. And, you know, those alders that were looking to make adjustments reached out to the board members, reached out to me, reached out to the office. And, you know, trying to get a greater understanding of, you know, what the needs are, where there could be efficiencies, even conversations of like, hey, if you're not using all your budget, then can we maybe move some funding here or there? Or thoughts of like, ideas of how we can greater support. And so even with those amendments, they have been very collaborative, whether we agreed with them or not. There has been a concentrated effort to reach out to the board and the Office of the Independent Monitor. This amendment, I would say there, there has been no collaborative nature as far as, from what I can see, connected to the Police Civilian Oversight Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in queue for Chair Pearson, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for being late. Chair, I have a question. And we were talking about collaboration and we were talking about formation. Do you feel, and you've mentioned a number of times that, you know, I'm not putting words into your mouth, is that, do you feel that the time that the, this, the independent monitor had to get organized in the past two years or so, was that enough, enough time? Were you getting your bearings? Or what was the disruption? And I'm saying disruption, correct me, and I'm sure you will. What was the disruption, the stalling that kept you from, from actually effectively working in that office? In that office?
Yeah, so what I would say is that there have been hiccups and there have been sometimes where we've had some barriers. There have, in those past few years, there were some stalls that have happened. And there are some that unfortunately I can't speak to because of, it's just not, due to like, HR things that I just can't speak to. And so there have been some roadblocks. Also too, during that time, the board significantly changed over, which then, as you all know, as elected officials and as I know, as also an elected official, is that, you know, when boards or commissions or councils are not, there's not like, there's, there's not a reoccurring of the same group of folks, that then there's like a learning curve that happens, especially if you have a very new board. And so what I would say is, right now, currently, I'm the only person on our board that is from the inaugural group of PCOB members. We have a few members on our board who came maybe a couple of years ago. And so they have a couple of years under their belt. The rest of our board members are all brand new and this is their first year that they will be completing. And so those, those are some barriers that have existed. But again, like I said, the folks are very committed to getting the work up to date and making sure that we are completing the things that we are tasked to do by ordinance. So that's what I, that's how I would answer your, your question. Is that, yes, there have been some roadblocks and hiccups in the past couple of years. But that doesn't necessarily mean, in my opinion, it says that this office is not effective or inefficient and that it should be completely dismantled and defunded for something else. Especially to the fact of a police department budget that is, is, is extremely astronomically larger than our budget, that could definitely afford to purchase the things that they need to, if they would like to. And that's the other question, are they even wanting to do that?
Okay, I have a final follow-up question. As I was driving in, you mentioned that there were 11 cases that, that the board was actively involved in. Was that, did I hear that correctly? Correct me if I was wrong. I won't go into that line of questioning.
The board doesn't, yeah, thank you. The board does not take complaints. And so the board itself, the Office of the Independent Monitor would take complaints. And so that is where the office is currently. But they also do not, at the moment, have an independent monitor. And we are in the process of hiring the interim independent monitor, which that will be part of their task. And honestly, we have three great candidates who will be coming forth tomorrow to give presentations about the work that they have done in their respective cities. And so again, that's work that we're still, we're still doing. And I would say that's accomplishment to, to have three very great candidates and qualified candidates to do this work and are willing to do it here in Madison.
Okay, then my follow-up question is, is that the 11 cases that you mentioned, they were in the Office of the Independent Monitor? And so are they being followed through? How are they being tracked? How are they documented? Do they report back to the board? And have they been reporting on a regular basis? Share that information, please.
So since the departure of their previous independent monitor, we have, the board has allowed the office to go ahead and continue taking in complaints. But the work in terms of the, the final product has stalled because there is no independent monitor in place currently. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the work isn't there and the work hasn't been done. It's just at a pause until we get an independent monitor in to resume that work. And so is there a way of tracking? Absolutely. There is a way that the office has, that they can say, this case is this number, or this case is completed, this case is still working on. Also, I would just like also to, from my own learning, complaints don't, many times, aren't just, we can do this within a week or we can do this within a month. Sometimes, depending on the type of complaint, it can take a lot of time. It can take months. And for some, it can take years, especially because this office only has three staff and two that actively work on investigations, including the independent monitor and the data analyst. If you look at, to the point earlier that I, to the point earlier that some of the public comment, commenters mentioned is that some of the offices, like in New York, some of them in Chicago, Miami, well, Miami doesn't exist anymore because of the feds. But in Oakland, in, in, in Seattle, these civilian oversights are extremely large. The accountability, the offices of accountability, they have hundreds of staff. They, they are able to have folks, investigators, go out and do work. And so to, to say like, okay, well, there's 11 cases, there's only two staff that are able to do that work, that's a very small office. And I'm proud of the work that they have been able to do thus far, especially when we have our data analyst who is only .6 time. And so hopefully that answers your question comparatively. And then also, as it relates to the, the complaints that we have in process.
Okay, thank you so very much for your patience. And so I have one final question that I'm going to wrap into related to dollars spent. And as I was doing my research, from 2025, the total allocated budget of the independent monitor was over $2 million. And as of 10/30, spent $803, $803. And for the PCOB, allocated $185,000, over $185,000, but it spent $73,000. And so that's a wide gap in what has been allocated through funding processes and what has been actually spent. So when we're looking at the 11 approximately that you're talking about, that, have you talked about that money? Or, because that money is just sitting, it'll go back into the general fund. But if we're looking at the money and budgeting, that's a, an allocated dollar amount and a spending amount. Can you speak to that? And then I'll be finished with my questioning.
Is your question around the budget over time or specifically for 2025?
Well, I, I did the gap, 2020, 2020, 2025. And if I'm incorrect, please correct me. It was $2, $2 million allocated. But as of 10/30/25, and maybe that's a specific question that I can give to staff if it's, if it's out of order. The spending gap, so much was allocated, but very little was spent. And I'm trying to figure out from you if you have an explanation for that.
Yeah, so we do have, part of the work that, the group that created us, one of the things that was important to have was a funding for, when a complaint comes forth with a complaint, we do an investigation. And then based off that investigation, we give a recommendation or we do a final result of what our investigation, and when I say ours, I mean the Office of the Independent Monitor, what that entails. The complaint, we have funding set aside, I believe it's $50,000, for complaints to be able to access for legal fees if they themselves wanted to take legal actions. And so that funding is to help them. And so we have not, because of the investigations have not been concluded, that funding has not necessarily been used. And so that may be, without necessarily having the document about the budget and the financial information readily available in my hand at the moment, that is what my guess is, that you're seeing some, a large amount of money not being used. And we have, we do have a list of attorneys that the, the board is looking to meet and just make sure that we, they're cleared so that they can go ahead and start working with complaints once those are, once those are also completed. Also think that there might be, because of, there was a period that it took the Police Civilian Oversight Board some time to hire the independent monitor. So there may be, you may be also seeing some of that funding that was not used because we did not have an independent monitor for some time. And we have been through that process. And I believe Alder Knox can speak to that because he was on the Police Civilian Oversight Board for the inaugural group at the time. But, and then we had some changes that happened there. And then I believe there were some funding that may not have been used because there was some time that it took for the office to get running and hire some staff. And so there might be some cost savings, the language we use, so cost savings that were not used for staffing needs at the time. So I think there's a combination. Do I foresee in the future that those fundings will be used and can be used? Absolutely. And I'm just grateful that we have the cost of continuation in the mayor's budget. And thank you for that, Mayor, and as, as well as some of the alders that have been advocating for us.
Thank you, I'm complete. The other questions will be for staff. Thank you, madam.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue for Chair Pearson. So thank you, Chair. Alder Madison, you had additional questions?
For another speaker, yes. For Alex Saludos, if he's still available.
He did not speak this evening, Alder?
Oh, he didn't?
No.
My bad. Okay, then Devon Snyder, or Devin Snyder?
Yep, go ahead, Alder.
All right, thank you. And it's a Devin or Devon? Sorry.
It's, it's Devon.
All right, Devon, thank you. Thanks for joining and speaking tonight. So just a quick question, pretty much same question as for Chair Pearson. Where I, I saw that, you know, there was, we received an email where there were some community members who were contacted and engaged for this amendment, but I did not see your name listed there. So were you engaged by the alders Knox, Harrington, McKinney, or Pritchard on this item?
I was not.
And then have you engaged with these alders at all on the PCOB?
No.
Just in general?
No.
Nope. And then can you just, I guess, give me an overall, your overall opinion on if the PCOB no longer existed? Like, what do you think this would mean for the overall community?
So I serve as the Chair of the Community Engagement, the Community Engagement Subcommittee. So I have the pleasure of hosting community listening sessions and actually going out to the public and being able to ask for their comments, their feedback, you know, any of their complaints. And if we take away this budget, we're taking away that. What we, what we have and what I'm very thankful for and what I strive for as the Chair is creating this constant feedback loop between the community where I can hear their complaints, their feedback, anything that we are not doing right as a board, anything that we can do better. And I can bring that back to the board. And we as a board then can decide and either create, you know, recommendations, policies. And then we then can report that back out to the community. It's this constant feedback loop. So when you asked me that question, if, if we take that away, we take away that. And that's detrimental. We're taking away their voice.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership, too. That's all I have for Devon.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Matthews, do you have a question for Devon?
Yeah. Are you able to answer how many subcommittees the PCOB has?
Yes. So we have the Executive Subcommittee, we have the Community Engagement Subcommittee, and we have the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee, or the External Policy and Procedures Subcommittee.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for Devon? Alder Knox?
Yeah, I just have one. Are the Subcommittee members and the, the members, are they still being supplemented for attending the meetings?
So we do not have, we do not have any stipends left for the remainder of the year. And that has not stopped us from showing up. We as the Executive Subcommittee, me, Maya, and Brandis, were just doing interviews all day for the interim OIM. And we have a board meeting tomorrow, which none of us are getting paid for. So that is not stopping any of us from doing the work because it's important. And we feel like we should show up for the community, but...
So what you said is, you used up your allotted stipend for the year? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other questions for Devon, so thank you. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Stephanie Rierich. My question is for Stephanie Rarick, if she's still available?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, thank you, Stephanie. Just a couple um questions. One, can you uh share what's your role with the PCOB? Or what's been your role?
Yeah, I recently or a couple of months ago became Chair of the External Policy and Procedure Committee. So I'm chairing that, and then I'm also serving on the Executive Committee.
Thank you. And such as with Devon and Maya, I did not see either of your names listed in the alder's engagement on this amendment. There were a couple of people, but you all were not listed in that engagement. So I just want to be sure I'm not missing anything. Were you engaged by either of the alders who are supporting this amendment on this amendment before it came forward?
No, I learned about it today.
And then were you, have you been engaged just with the three alders as a member of the PCOB?
No, I haven't heard from them about this.
Um, have you been engaged because you're the Chair for the policy work? Have you been engaged with them about that?
Nothing.
Oh. Um, and then such as with Devon, can you just talk about your your thoughts on just in general, overall, what would it mean for the community to see this sort of disrupted in this way, ended in this way?
Well, in this way, it would be very alarming and just drawing, going back to the contrast that was drawn between the public input that went into the process for creating the PCOB and the Office of the Independent Monitor versus getting, in my opinion, blindsided by an amendment um presented from the floor to defund the office. To me, it's an example of how commonly uh just the purse strings are used to undermine democratic democratic process and the will of the community. So I think it's major and and we are a community that has had a lot of pride in its police department from previous eras. And the community has shown that we want to see actual like community policing that is supportive of the health and well-being of the the people in neighborhoods, regardless of how they look and their access to resources and things like that. So I think it's major. Um, and like I said before, we have an opportunity to do much bigger picture, longer term, positive impact on policing and the relationship between the community and the police. And if this were to happen in this way in particular, it would be terrible, I in my opinion. And I also want to say there's been a lot of information available. The independent monitor put out, Independent Monitor did put out a report. Um, there's a newer report that we were just receiving about the body cam pilot. Um, our meetings are available to the public. We've just determined the kinds of reports we're putting out as the PCOB, where we are going to report on the budget details and what our goals are and how we're uh successful at being implementing them. And as Devon indicated, everyone's decided to work much more than we get stipends for. Um, there's a big commitment in this community to healthier relationships with uh policing and healthier approaches to policing. And I think it's really important that this amendment not go through tonight as part of making good on that commitment. That's all.
Oh, my bad. Thanks again, Stephanie, and I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. Thanks for yours.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for Stephanie?
Uh, not for Stephanie. Uh, is Bonnie Rose still?
Can you hold on just one minute, Alder, then, and see Alder Pritchett is, is it for Stephanie?
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead.
Stephanie, uh, you you did mention that you are a part of uh the policies, correct?
Yes.
Uh, would it be fair to say whether or not you 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 mentioned engagement? And other alders have mentioned engagement. So what level of engagement does your group have with the community?
Well, so I'm the on the External Policy and Procedure Subcommittee. Um, but Devon is the Chair of the Community Engagement Subcommittee, and they regularly organize listening sessions. And um, yeah, so that's that's a big piece of what's happened. And that was happening with the independent monitor before also. Um, yes, there was just one that my sponsoring organization hosted here in the neighborhood.
Do you do you regularly publish your information about the engagement with respect to comments, suggestions that you have received from the community that would perhaps facilitate or aid the your group?
So I feel like this question would be better for Devon, the Chair of that committee. It's not a committee I participate in, and I assume so. Those meetings are publicly noticed because there's always a chance that we'll have a quorum. And um, so, yeah, I I think someone else needs to speak to how the results are shared. But the videos are always available. I do know that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Knox, is it for Stephanie?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, how long have you been serving in that capacity of the external policy role?
Uh, I've got, let's see, I got elected to that in spring.
So several months?
Several months, yes.
Okay. So can you give us an example of one of those? I just want to get a feel for one of those external policies that you are working on or developing? Can you give us an example?
Yeah, uh, what we what we did at our last meeting, um, which took a while to set up, partly because of the changes that have happened in the office, plus our first two meetings were taken up with um the ordinance to defund us last time. So the first two meetings that I participated in, External Policy and Procedure, we needed to focus on the ordinances to defund the PCOB. Um, we voted against it the first time, then it came back to us. So that time we went through it line by line um with a slide presentation. And then somehow that didn't make it into the, and we voted to place it on file with prejudice that somehow didn't make it into the legislative record. And it came back to us, and we did it again. Um, but the last meeting, um, we were really pleased to be able to work with MPD to go through their strategic plan and see how it uh lines up with the recommendations that have been made by OR, OIR for changes in the department. And we are prioritizing a number of aspects. And someone already mentioned today that we're going through MPD training to see what the training is um currently. And we're focused a lot on uh response, especially during mental health crisis and de-escalation training for uh training in use of force also. So those are some key aspects of the policies that we are pursuing. Um, yeah, so we've just been establishing our priorities and beginning to work with MPD.
Yeah, thank you. So it it sounds like you you guys were from previously anticipating that you your funding might be at risk. So would would you say this is a total surprise that someone might come up with such a proposal? Because it sounds like you guys were looking at threats and things like that and trying to anticipate some of those things. Would you say that?
This was a surprise. Uh, it wasn't a surprise that our funding would be threatened, um, because it has been over and over. But we were, I was surprised to see this on this day. Like, each time we have fended off the threat, it's, I'm sure it's like getting this established to begin with. People sort of breathe a sigh of relief because they won, you know, a hard fought campaign. And here we are again. So, yeah, so we like to believe that that uh we were going to be in the clear, at least at least for a little bit. So uh, it is a surprise that it happened this way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other alders for Stephanie? Thank you, Stephanie. Alder Madison, did you have additional questions?
Yeah, well, yeah, different speaker. Thanks, Mayor, for Greg Glimbek.
Uh, can we bring Mr. Glimbek up? Go ahead, Alder.
All right, thanks, thanks, uh, Mayor, and thanks, Greg, for being available for questions. And pretty much same thing, did you happen to um have any conversation with the of the folks who have uh put this floor amendment forward, the three alders, about the amendment beforehand?
None at all.
And have you had, oh, go ahead.
I heard about it first today, um, actually in early afternoon.
Thank you. And then have you had an opportunity to engage with them just in general about the Office of the PCOB and the OIM?
I've actually engaged a bit with Alder Knox, um, um, no, um, like OIM and other material, other related stuff, like, you know, alcohol consumption, no. So we've had occasional emails. Um, but but, you know, and and I remember there was a question from um Alder Harrington McKinney that I responded to a while back. Um, not a ton of engagement, but some.
Just nothing on this specific amendment?
Correct, correct, none.
Thank you. And then just a quick question, because I, if I remember correctly, there were or are 13 um cases or items in process. So just from your professional experience or opinion, I guess, what would happen? Or what do you think that would look like for this office to be sort of disrupted or defunded? Uh, quoted quoting one of the alders in this kind of way abruptly?
Well, for one thing, it would mean that all the people who have filed complaints and those who are actually currently in process, um, they would just be left in the lurch. Um, you know, some of those complaints, I think, actually have a lot of validity. Um, and at least one of those complaints, it it does appear that there was, you know, clear officer misconduct. Um, all of that would just be dropped.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Glenn, is it for Mr. Glimbek? Alder Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Greg, could you please describe uh the community process that led into the PCOB and OIM creation? And how is that different than the floor amendment process we're talking about tonight?
It's 100% different. Um, the process that led to the creation of the PCOB and OIM um occurred over years with a huge amount of community input. Um, it started in actually with the creation of the MPD Policy Procedure Review Ad-Hoc Committee in 2015. There was also um community engagement with the President's Work Group and Police Community Relations that fed into the ad hoc committee. Um, and, you know, OIR was then brought in for a comprehensive review. OIR met with many community groups, many community individuals. Um, the ad hoc committee held meetings over years, um, soliciting a great deal of community input. Um, it was all extremely transparent. Um, and then um there was a three-alter work group that was set up to craft the ordinances. Um, and then the that resulted in the emergence of the PCOB and then later the OIM. Um, that's completely different from what's happened now. Um, there's been no community engagement, as far as I can tell. And it was, and this is a very abrupt thing at the last second. Um, so, you know, 100% different.
And one more question. How does it feel to see that work potentially undone without the same level of community engagement?
It it actually feels devastating. It really feels devastating. Um, and what some other speakers have spoken about, how it it feels like we are constantly under attack. Um, like, there's the constant threat of defunding. And and I'm not going to defend everything that's happened. You know, within OIM and PCOB, there are definitely some things that, you know, could have been done better. But there's actually some really, really important accomplishments, including really important recommendations that could be transformational for MPD that have gotten very little attention, actually. Um, yeah, so it would be devastating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, is it for Mr. Glimbek?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Out, I have several questions, but let me start with this. Um, the council received the 2025 annual uh report of the Office of Independent Monitor, and we uh we received that. Um, how much input did you have with preparing the 2025 annual report?
Um, I I I think you're referring to the 2023, 24 um annual report that was.
No, it says 2025, 2025.
It was a a great deal, actually. Um, I worked much on the recommendations. Um, like, for example, the recommendation to implement situational decision-making training. Um, I communicated with a team that had developed that, um, got information about the randomized controlled trial that was performed, um, just that showed the benefits in terms of um like reduced racial disparities, reduced use of force, et cetera. I I I did that with, you know, many of the recommendations. Um, the data analysis on the um on the sustained rate for use of force allegations, that that was something that I did, you know, entirely myself. Um, yeah, so a great deal of it was my work.
Okay, because the report was received after um the um independent monitor had left the um the city. And so you completed this work, or this was primarily work that you pulled together?
Um, I I think you're, okay, with the annual report, that actually was completed while the annual, while the monitor was still in the city, um, was still employed. The the first version of the annual report was submitted um on deadline by March 15. Um, but then, you know, there were um rec, you know, suggestions for changes, which I actually agreed with. Um, and then it took quite a while for that to then get resubmitted. Um, like, the first version was not emailed to all alders. It was emailed to council staff, but not to all alders, as as well as to the mayor's office and others. Um, the, yes, the final version that included the executive summary, um, you know, that that was prior to um Robin Copley leaving.
Okay, and this final question I have is related to the uh pilot study that was done uh done on the North Side. Could you share your feelings about um how effective that was? Or what were your um what were your thoughts related to to that? Was that a robust discussion? So give us your feedback on the pilot.
Yeah, and here, you're referring in part, I believe, to the um audit that we performed of the pilot um and submitted, you know, the report to council. There were um serious problems with the pilot. When the council authorized um the pilot program, it authorized it with a set of directives, a set of very clear directives. Um, one of those directives, for example, was that it be conducted as a randomized controlled trial, which is basically the gold standard for how you do such a study, because then you can really depend on the results. Uh, another directive was that the officer time um spent on body cam related tasks would be recorded. It could be recorded, for example, in logbooks. And that was actually in the resolution authorizing it, that that specified that this had to happen. Um, there was also, the the council also specified that um that in the pilot that there needed to be better concordance with the um policy recommendations, the model policy generated by the Body Cam Committee. Um, and, no, there were, there were other elements as well. None of those were followed at all. Um, there wasn't a randomized controlled trial. Um, there, yeah, it it, so there were huge problems in that regard. In addition, there are problems in analysis, like, for example, the um, the number, like, if you look at the data, the number of arrests that the analyst claimed had happened um during a period of time, that was wildly off. It, like, the only way to come up with a number similar to that was by um counting every single municipal citation and every single referred charge as a separate arrest, when in reality, many times, you know, somebody is arrested and there are multiple charges. So that was entirely wrong. Um, there were errors in how the analysis was performed. Like, um, it used what's called difference and differences analysis. And there are, you know, there's a key assumption that you have, that has to hold for that to be valid. Um, and that was disregarded. So there were basically very serious problems at multiple levels um with the pilot and um in the resulting report. And the council at the time that they authorized the pilot said that. And the council at the time that they authorized the pilot said that, now, there should be a third-party analysis. And the PCOB, um, specified that this is actually something of priority to analyze this. So that analysis was performed, and then you got the resulting report. Um, so it's much like peer review in science.
Okay, as the data analyst, um, were you able to provide input and direction, um, with the implementation of the, the North Side Pilot? And I, I hear that you had questions with the final project. What I'm asking is, um, as the data analyst, did you give corrective input, information, collaboration, any of that on the pilot?
I actually wasn't the data analyst at the time that the pilot was, um, was brought into being. I, I ended up being hired as a data analyst after the pilot had already completed.
Oh, okay, and I, I guess because I've, um, I've seen your name and I've also seen your interaction with the formation of the, um, of the, um, implementation task force that you would have, would have had some preliminary input in the organization and gathering of the North, um, pilot.
Like, I, I did serve on the, um, the Body Cam Committee. Um, and, you know, there I did have input that, um, potentially could have been used, but actually none of that was directly, you know, oriented to the pilot, and, and that was like years before the pilot occurred. And then when the pilot was being formulated, how it was actually formulated was contrary to all the recommendations of that committee, you know, so basically I, I had no input into that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other Alders in the queue with questions for Mr. Columbia? So thank you, Greg. Um, Alder Madison, did you have additional questions?
Uh, no, Mayor, I think I've gotten everybody on my list.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, you had additional questions?
I had a question for Bonnie Rowe, if she's still there.
She is. Uh, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Um, so Bonnie, um, I'd like to ask a few questions, and then if you could just give me your summation. Um, uh, talk to me or walk me through the, um, the North Pilot Study of Body One Cameras, and then if you can walk me through, um, why the thinking that the current, um, independent monitoring in this position was the cart before the har, the cart before the, how do you say that term? The cart before the horse.
Okay, well, I'll just start quick by saying that I also did attend, um, all of the meetings of the Police Body Camera Feasibility Review Committee as they were writing the report. Um, and I believe it was extremely thorough, very detailed. Um, and I recall, um, I believe the city attorney had said that it was up to the common council to determine whether or not, um, the Body Camera Feasibility Review Committee's, um, recommendations were taken into account significantly enough to do a pilot. And as you know, the common council voted yes to do the pilot, as well as all the things that, um, one of the other speakers had mentioned, all those different groups. So I believe that, um, the pilot was implemented well. I know that, um, the data analyst is very, um, opposed to body-worn cameras, and I, I think that it's kind of created a difficult situation, even within the Office of the Independent Monitor, knowing that the Independent Monitor did want them and thought they would be valuable to investigations, and now after looking at many other, um, oversight organizations, um, around the country, that they are very instrumental. And I, I just feel like it's, um, we put the cart before the horse by implementing this Office of the Independent Monitor without giving them probably the number one or at least a very critical tool to conduct those investigations. Does that answer your question?
Was there public engagement for the, uh, North Pilot? Can you speak to that?
Uh, yeah, I think there was, because I know I've spoken to it several times. There were a number of meetings, um, well, with the feasibility review committee. There was opportunities each time they met to speak there, which I generally did. There were opportunities, um, in other committees, like the, um, Equal Opportunities Commission and at common council itself. So I do believe there was plenty of, um, opportunity for public input in that we heard some really great cases for it, including by Judge Everett Mitchell before the common council on that last meeting when the pilot finally passed.
And so my final question is going to be just, uh, um, just take a deep breath, because I've got to ask it, and it's probably going to make you feel uncomfortable, but I, I need to ask it. Um, there's been a flavor, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, that, um, this came out of the blue and there was no consultation from the, um, uh, sponsors of, of this amendment. Um, that's been an undercurrent there. And so could you speak to why, uh, you would feel that, um, this is appropriate at this time? Could you speak to that?
Uh, why this amendment is appropriate at this time?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, to be perfectly honest, I wish it had come through on time with any other amendments. Um, I don't like how it was seemingly sprung onto people that didn't have a lot of awareness, because public input is very important to me, and so is consulting with whatever group, um, the money would be coming from. I'm not sure how much consultation was done at the police department when, for example, CARES was implemented and they lost $250,000 from their budget, and it affected the Hiring Academy. So I, I do feel like there's a bit of a double standard about when should amendments come from the floor and when shouldn't they, but, um, apparently this was not in by the deadline, and it was the only opportunity. I feel like the timing is important, because, um, I heard the current interim to the interim monitor say that it will take six-plus months to hire an interim monitor, and another six-plus months to hire a permanent monitor, and knowing how those things go, obviously, it sometimes takes even longer than we expect. I think, um, it would make sense to move this money now to be able to implement body cameras, and I agree with, um, Sharon Irwin, who I think said, this is kind of a drop in the bucket. It's going to cost more than this, but what this, if I understand it right, does is sets up the staff to be able to, um, to process the body cam videos, to redact, to do all those kind of forensic things that would be needed to do. It's, it's to provide for the staffing and the operating costs, not the capital costs. If I had my way to be able to write an amendment, I would include all of the surplus money, which is, I can't remember, 1.4 or something million dollars that was initially allocated, um, you know, since, you know, this was, um, begun in late 2020. Um, and I would put that surplus money that I think is in the rainy day fund to provide for the rollout of some initial cameras. So I think it's timely, because I think to have a quality Independent Monitor's office, they need access to body cam footage. They need unfettered access as freely as possible um, to body camera footage. And I don't think we can have a successful, I'm not saying there hasn't been any success or no work done. I, I know that they meet a lot, and there has been work that's been done, but I don't think it's been very transparent, because you can't even find out if there's been an investigation, and that was something required, and the ordinance was to keep a summary of those things, and there's very little on the website. So that's why I think it's timely. It's timely, because we don't have an independent monitor currently. Uh, we don't even actually have an interim. We have a interim to an interim, and, um, meanwhile, we have no ability, apparently, to fund body cameras, which every other city our size and above, and all the cities around us already have access to. So I, I think we should to figure it out and put our money where our mouth is and accomplish what Chief Barnes set out. He said he was going to go after the money in the budget for 2026 for department-wide implementation in 2027. That was his conclusion in the body camera, uh, pilot report.
So my final question, and I promise this is my, I'm sorry that I'm, no, I'm not sorry that I'm not drawing, drawing this out, is is that, um, the, the proper funding, and it has been mentioned back bef, uh, before, that, uh, the Independent Monitor has been on the chopping block before. And this amendment seems to, um, eradicate that. Is it, do you feel that this amendment really backs up so that, uh, this, the Independent Monitor and all of that could be set up properly with the funding and all of that? Is that, is that the direction that we're going? Is that the direction that you saw this amendment being?
I mean, that's how I see it, is that if, if an Independent Monitor's office is unable to do thorough investigations without the critical tool of body cameras, which was pointed out by the expert they brought in, um, I think it's important to implement those tools first, and if we still think that this kind of accountability is important, that we find a way to implement that in the future. I think, you know, the cost of continued budgeting makes it very difficult to reprioritize for today's priorities, but that's a really important step to take if we want to, um, you know, better, uh, prioritize oversight over police, building trust in our community with police, that kind of stuff. I think body cameras add that benefit even without an independent monitor, but if we want to value that in the future, which, you know, a lot of cities are, but note that every other city that has one uses body cameras, and Madison alone does not.
Okay, thank you.
Alder?
Alder Glenn? Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Bonnie. Thank you for calling in tonight. I appreciate it. Um, I heard you say, uh, a couple words early when you were being asked a question about the processes and kind of wishing that, you know, it would have happened, um, a little different and went through the proper process. What message does it send to the community about council and funding and processes? Um, and especially for those that fought for this, knowing so much about it. I know you've been involved in it a lot. So, I mean, what message does it send?
Uh, I don't know what message it sends. I think the fact that we're having this discussion right now shows that there is the ability for public comment on this. I don't know how much consultation the mayor had last year at budget season when she, um, decided to cut funding for the Independent Monitor, and that if the referendum would not have passed, both the PCOB and the Independent Monitor's office would have lost all their funding. I don't know if consultation was done then. Um, I don't, I think there's been plenty of amendments from the floor on other topics, even really significant things like, uh, a few years ago, when, um, it was brought up from the floor that they should fund any um, gaps in funding from, uh, a voluntary furlough program with money from the police academy. I don't know that anybody consulted the police academy or the police department to see how, uh, detrimental it would be if they were not able to account for attrition as they were taking in the town of Madison as well. Um, the time that that happened was during the meeting, when I remember Acting Chief Wall was able to kind of delineate what that would mean, and subsequently that amendment did not pass. Um, it, it failed really big, but there is opportunity, even in this meeting, as we see, to be able to, to dialogue with these different, um, chairs and department heads and things. So I would say it's not ideal, but not unprecedented. Thanks.
Um, the other, as the newbie on the block, I heard you mention, you know, about mayor's budgets, and I don't know, I've been looking at it since it came out for quite a bit this year. I don't know how long it, we had last year, but when all of the amendments were out, but I think there's a difference between a floor and, uh, and $400,000 in a floor, um, than, uh, a couple of the others you did. Um, I didn't, you know what? Thank you very much, Bonnie. That'll be enough. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions for registrants, so thank you to all our registrants. And that will bring us to item three, which is Legisstar 89733, the 2026 Executive Capital Budget. Alder Pritchett? No, okay. Uh, Alder, excuse me, President Vidiver, a motion, please, on item three.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the Executive Capital Budget as amended by the Finance Committee. Are there questions for staff on the capital budget? Seeing none, is there discussion on the capital budget? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the capital budget? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item three, the 2026 Capital Budget. That will take us to item four, which is Legisstar 90249, the 2026 Executive Operating Budget as amended by the Finance Committee. On the operating budget, President Vidiver?
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Uh, I think what we'll do, uh, without objection is move through the amendments that were submitted before the deadline. And then, uh, if there are any floor amendments, and then what will be before us is the entire budget, and we can do questions for staff on the entire budget at that time. And seeing no objection to that process. I'll just remind us that then what we'll do is move through one by one on each amendment. I'll have the sponsors, um, uh, move and second it, and we can do questions for staff discussion, and then we'll vote on the individual amendment. So on Amendment One, which was submitted by the deadline, um, I would ask President Vidiver to make the motion, please.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment One. Are there any questions for staff on Amendment One? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion on Amendment One, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of Amendment One? Seeing no objection, that amendment is adopted. All right, are there any amendments to the operating budget from the floor? President Vidiver?
Uh, so this is floor amendment one. Right? Yes, okay, thank you.
So if you wish to move an amendment now, is the.
Yes, floor amendment one, uh, which is for, uh, Ecoli Source Testing Pilot, um, which is a zero impact, zero-dollar impact on the overarching budget, um, and will match county, um.
A, a motion, Alder.
Sorry, moved to adopt.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt floor amendment one. President Vidiver, do you just speak to it?
Sorry, I apologize for speaking to it already. So, uh, so this is, so Dane County was able to get, uh, their amendment through for, um, sort of their portion of this through public health. Um, so the goal is to have one beach pilot tested for the source of Ecoli contamination. Um, Ecoli often closes our beaches. Um, without knowing the source of the Ecoli, it's very difficult to understand what, um, mitigation measures will be used. So the purpose of this is to do a pilot, um, through public health, Madison, Dane County, and the county will put in their normal amount, and the city will put in our amount. However, um, it will only be, uh, through if, if there is sufficient underspending in city-only expenses by June 1st, 2026. So it will not impact, uh, the expenditure restraint importantly.
Thank you, Alder. On floor amendment one, are there questions for staff? Alder O'Wits?
Thank you, Mayor. Do, do we have someone from Public Healthon?
I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering how this differs from some of our existing beach testing that we're doing? doing?
Sure. So, all we do right now is test for the presence of E. coli. So, that gives us a flag of thumbs up or thumbs down, and that's when we close the beaches. This is a more extensive testing that we do not actually do. We would have to put, identify a lab to be able to conduct this testing, but it would be helpful in, able to identify, as Alder Vidiver said, the source of that testing. So, whether it's human, avian, ruminant, or other source.
Thank you, Alder. Other questions for staff on floor amendment one? Seeing none, then is there discussion on floor amendment one? Seeing no discussion. That's been moved and seconded on floor amendment one. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that amendment will pass. And then we are back to the underlying budget as currently amended. Are there any additional floor amendments? Alder Knox?
Yep, I believe it's amendment two, floor amendment two.
Are you making a motion, Alder?
I'm making a motion, yes.
There's a motion, is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt floor amendment two. Alder Knox, would you like to speak to it?
Sure. This motion is to eliminate funding for the Office of Independent Monitoring, and that would include eliminating 2.6 FTE positions and funding for the Police Civilian Oversight Board, which we included in this reduction. And that would be for, I think, 400 or 5,299, and then increase the Madison Police Department by that amount for funding, for staff funding. So, I'll just say a few things about this. You know, I guess the first question someone would ask is why eliminate the OMI and the PCOB? You know, as we know, there's been a history of ineffective, ineffectiveness with this office, the OIM and the Supporting Commission. And I know this because I've served on this commission for two years, and I served along with the current chair, Maya Pearson. In my opinion, the recruitment process for this commission from the beginning was flawed, resulting in a majority of the applicants coming from agencies that had stated interest to defund and eliminate the MPD rather than to reform it. In my other opinion, the hiring process for this office was poorly managed, resulting in having non-subject matter experts participating in the hiring process, and then resulting in two recrutements and ultimately a discrimination complaint. And I don't say this lightly because I worked for over 30 years in, in state and county government in human resources. So, that's my opinion. I won't go into any details, but in addition to that, there's been very little, if any, management oversight resulting in very few complaints being investigated, as well as we even had a legal challenge related to how the PCOB people were appointed. That's a fact. And in our last budget, I had several discussions with fellow Alders about debating or whether we should refund it. And we nearly decided not to fund the Office of Independent Monitor. They hadn't submitted a report, they hadn't investigated any cases. I may be wrong, it may have been one case that he mentioned, that she mentioned that they were investigating, and they barely had a functioning complaint process. Now, I just want to state on the record, I was one of the people who voted for it, to continue it in the budget last year, because I'm one of the charter members of this, and I came into this really optimistic that we could actually do some really good citizens' oversight, and that's important to me. But when I look back now, I just feel like it's just more of the same. I think they've, some of the ordinances they've complied with, I don't think they've complied with, with all of the intent. And just the very fact that we had the independent monitor leave, now we're going through a process which is, always takes several months to get a interim independent monitor, and then we're going to have to go through another process to get a permanent independent monitor. So, what is really going to take place during that time? I just have to tell you that I'm just not optimistic about that. I realize it's not a popular position in this community, but we all need to face the fact that now is the time to move forward with body-worn cameras. We have had years of debates about body-worn camera. We've had a year-long commission, ad hoc commission, that made recommendations for body-worn cameras. We've had a pilot that's made similar, and I think one of the participants just went down the line of, of our whole history and process for that. The thing about this proposal is, and wait, and I guess I just have to say, many of my colleagues state that they support body-worn cameras, but they cannot afford it. That's a cop-out. That is a cop-out. And we keep putting in on the, I guess we call it the, what do we call it? The Horizon List? I call it the Pie in the Sky List, because a lot of things never come back from that list, or they disappear from that list. So, I think now we must stop delaying. I know it's not easy for people, but we need to close this office and put that, put those funds in MPD so that they can get on with the staffing and operating costs needed to fill those positions, so that hopefully in the next budget process in 2027, we can do the capital budget for the, for the cameras, I mean, excuse me, for, yeah, for the cameras, and, and any other operating costs we need to operate. They don't need to fill this, these positions right early in 2006, but I think they will need to be able, to be able to be trained and ready to implement body cam, cameras, hopefully in 2027, either as a phase-in approach or department-wide. You know, I really believe this is a very conservative approach to moving forward towards body-worn cameras and our opportunity for staffing in 2026. I think it moves us closer to a goal that we've been talking about for over 15 years. You know, to be honest with you, we have an opportunity to even do more. We could actually probably get into purchasing cameras through the extra money that was sent back from this agency, over $24 million, but it just goes back to the general fund. That's another indication of how ineffective this, this organization is. And it pains me because I know this is something that we desperately need, but I feel like we put the cart before the horse. Even the expert says that most civilian police oversight, they need data. They need that data from the body cameras to be able to move forward on some of these investigations. It's not the cure-all of everything, but it certainly gives you some data to work with. So, I just feel like if we don't make this effort right now, then we're just keep pushing it back further and further. Now, we invested, what, $83,000 in the pilot, and everything we've done along the way has indicated that we need to move forward with this, we need to move into the future now. It's a tool that our police officers need, and I think we could always revisit the, putting this office back once we start collecting the data that we need, and we could come back and bring it back. But I think right now, our most urgent thing is getting into the 21st century. I've talked to a couple of police officers that go to training, and their, and their colleagues are shocked that we don't have body-worn cameras except for our SWAT team. It's embarrassing, because I think we have a top-notch police department. I interact with a lot of police officers. I think we have the most professional police officers that I have encountered. But I tell you, we got to give them the tools to be able to do their jobs effectively. Now, I could diverse with some of the comments that people said, but I'm not going to do that. I mean, somebody, you know, like, like I'm not a black man, really? Seriously? I probably endured more incidents with police officers. I grew up in inner-city Milwaukee. I've had several incidents, negative incidents with the police. I used to live in Detroit, Michigan. My first memory of police was these guys called the Big Four. They were four Irish police who used to kick people's doors down in my neighborhood. I witnessed it at six years old. So, I don't want anybody to try to make the impression that I don't understand the seriousness of this issue. But I do know this, body-worn cameras can at least give us some idea of what that interaction is between our citizens and police. And quite frankly, we've had more justice in the last five or 10 years because of video camera. Because before, it would be someone testified, that witness statements can be iffy, and then we all want to support law enforcement. But we know we, so a lot of people tend to come in on the bad end of that, that equation. So, I think now is the time, I don't want to lecture, but we've been putting this off for way too long, and this is just a little piece, so that when we come around in the next budget, we've made a commitment. So, now we got to make the next step to move forward. It is time. All the experts have spoken. I'm sorry that this didn't come together earlier so we could have more debates, but I'm going to be honest with you, we debated this issue to death. There are no more debates, literally. We've heard it all. So, I'm going to just encourage you to just think about, how can we move closer to justice by having a tool that we all can benefit from, from knowing that we're safe, that everybody can feel safe in our community? And I think that benefits people of color more than anyone. So, I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm not going to respond to some of those comments that people made, because the people who know me know who I am. I don't have to justify that to anybody. I'm doing this for our community, and it's time for Madison to step up and move forward.
Thank you, Alder. Are there questions for staff on floor amendment two? Alder Govindarajan, is there a question? Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you. This is a question for Director Hilsen, also known as the interim interim, I believe. Earlier at public comment, I think someone mentioned that it's supposed to apparently take months to hire the interim independent monitor, and then another six months to hire the actual independent monitor. I asked this question in Finance Committee. Erin, can we have some clarification on the timeline of hiring the independent monitor? Thank you.
Whoops, certainly. So, we posted that for a couple of weeks earlier this fall, the interim monitor. We received around, I want to say 37 applications for that position. 16 or 17 were minimally qualified. As Maya indicated earlier, members from the PCOB went through a round of interviews on Saturday of, I think, seven or eight applicants, and we have three that were asked to attend the PCOB tomorrow to give a presentation largely on their qualifications and skills for the position. After that presentation tomorrow, we have the intention of deliberating in closed session over the candidates that the Hiring Committee is recommending, and hopefully making a selection within the next week or so. We would intend on completing background checks and then negotiating a contract with the selected individual, and then hopefully getting them on board in the coming weeks. As interim interim, I will assure you that I am expediting this process. I do want to note that there was originally some concern over sort of how we posted it and the idea that we posted that without allowing whoever is selected to apply for that final position and the permanent position. And the purpose of that is really to allow that person, the interim, someone who has a lot of subject matter expertise, to be able to be the hiring manager for that role, so that we have someone sort of much more skilled and knowledgeable in this area than the interim interim to run that process. So, I would anticipate that it could take six to nine months for the permanent, but with the level of candidates that we have for the interim position, I felt pretty confident. I think, I don't want to speak for the chair, but, of the PCOB, but the, I think the chair felt pretty confident that that person would be able to not only manage that hiring process, but also do things like further the investigations in the, in the agency, engage in the outreach, and do sort of all of the other things that are needed for that role. That was a little long-winded for the question that you asked, so pardon that.
Thank you, Director. Just wanted to confirm that, because we heard earlier it was going to take months. So, would you, we spoke earlier, you said it's going to take about three weeks-ish, maybe, to hire the interim?
Yes.
Maybe. Great.
Sorry, so I keep just turning myself off there, but yeah, it'll be about a week to get any background checks completed, and then, and then, and to complete any negotiation, and then we would need to, you know, typically give a little bit of time for them to get started.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Matthews, questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think this question is for City Attorney Haas, or maybe you. But I'm just wondering how, because we have an existing ordinance that calls for the existence of a PCOB and the Office of the Independent Monitor, how does that factor into this budget amendment and having this defunding to then go, have these funds go somewhere else? How does that kind of play in with the existing ordinance?
Sure, Alder. Well, the way I look at it, the, the independent monitor office and the board were created by ordinance, but they had to be funded through the budget, right? And so, that's what the council did. In my opinion, the ordinance is still, would still be in the books, would, there would have to be, the council would have to decide whether it wanted to take any action to repeal those ordinances, but I think even if they stayed in the books, if there's no funding for them, then the offices, the office and the board would not be operational. then the offices, the office and the Board would not be operational.
Okay. Thank you, I was just wondering.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, Madison, questions?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, my question is for Erin. Just a quick question for the, I guess, the interim interim. For, I believe I wrote the number down correctly, there are thirteen cases or items in process. Is that correct? Take your time.
I believe it's actually fourteen that are currently in process, in one phase or another.
Thank you. And then, I guess, the biggest, my biggest question is, what happens, or what do you believe would happen if this office was defunded and sort of just, you know, null and void in a disruptive kind of way? What happens to those cases?
Well, related to those cases, those cases would just have to be sort of closed with no findings, and all of the complainants would have to be contacted to let them know that their cases were no longer being investigated by the office.
So just, just to clarify on my tired brain, the complainants who filed these fourteen complaints, or whatever the process is called, would just be closed? Like, they would just get contacted?
Well, we would not, we would not have any personnel, any staff available to continue to investigate those complaints, and no staff to analyze any of the data coming out of them, no staff to provide any recommendations to the police department related to the findings, related to any of them. So yes, we would have to close all of those investigations, report back that the investigations were closed and the office was closed.
Woo, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitiver.
Also, for interim, interim director, can you talk to us about the positions that are already there and in place? Like, I mean, presumably they have some protections as city employees. If the, if the funding just goes away, will they be, would they be reallocated to other places? Would they be transferred? What, and, and what happens with, like, their representation by unions and all of that? Can you help us with that?
Yeah, so our layoff process really precludes folks from sort of automatically being transitioned or having rights to displace into other positions. However, our standard process would have us identifying any other vacancies that might exist in the city, identifying those that they're minimally qualified for, and then offering them placements into some of those positions. So we would typically work through a transition for them and identify other roles for them. But the personnel rules really give rights within an agency, and because there would no longer be any positions left in the agency, they wouldn't really have any of those sort of displacement rights that naturally come with city employment through those personnel rules.
Then my next question is for Chief Patterson, but I want to respect if others have questions for Director Hilsen.
Alder Otwos, is it for?
My question is also for Chief Patterson.
I'll keep you in the queue. Alder Tischler, is it for Erin? No. Alder Harrington McKinney, is it for Erin? All right, go ahead, Alder Harrington McKinney.
So how many staff are we talking, I have two questions. How many staff are we talking about? Could you speak that into the record?
Yeah, so we're talking about one office administrative staff person and one data analyst that is at point six FTE.
Okay, so two staff we're talking about.
We're talking about two individuals, yes, two humans.
And my next question is, as the interim, because you said that currently there is a possibility of, of an interim being hired, could you speak into the record that, would that interim be eligible for a full position?
So that interim would be more like an LTE status, where they would have full benefits, full one-hundred percent pay for the time that they're here, but it would be on a temporary basis while the permanent position is filled. And then, most likely, because we try to make sure that we're transitioning folks appropriately some ways into after the hire of the permanent, so that we had some transition work that could occur to transition the work from the interim to the permanent IM.
So for the record, the interim would not be able to apply or be considered for a permanent position?
That's correct. That's how we posted the position, so folks who applied for the interim knew that to be the case when they applied for the interim. You know, there are some scenarios where if you had a failed recruitment or something like that, and someone else was running the process, they could apply, but because they're running the process effectively, it would give them undue advantage in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Let's see, Alder Pritchett, is it for Erin? Okay, go ahead.
When was the last time this position was revised? Has it been revised since the first? Has the position been revised?
So we made some fairly minor revisions with the PCOB before posting the position, just to make sure that it was going to do all of the things that we intended it to do in the interim. So there were some minor modifications that were made as a part of that process. We would intend to use our equitable hire plan with the interim as the hiring manager, and go through a more extensive review of that position description as a part of that equitable hire plan for the permanent hire process.
Given the history of the, of the last IM, did you pay attention to what some of those problems were, and did this new revised position description remedy that?
I want to be kind of careful in how I respond to that. I think, you know, there are some things that I, would not be appropriate for me to speak on as a human resources director, related to personnel evaluation and anything like that. I can only say that because there were not significant changes to that position description, I would not say the answer could be yes. I would say it would have to be no, because we did not make significant changes to the position.
Would it be fair to ask whether or not, when you look at the, I'm looking at the last position description, and I'm looking at minimum qualifications?
Mm-hmm.
And the statement says, "Four years of professional work experience in public or private administration, police oversight, or a related field, and a clear understanding of disenfranchised and marginal, marginalized communities." How have they did that way in on this new?
So, yes, for the interim, or, so the permanent, we will review those minimum qualifications and make a decision about what the appropriate minimum qualifications are for the permanent. For the interim, we wanted to make sure that we were really focused on getting folks with direct experience in oversight, in police oversight, especially in conducting investigations. And so we went through a comparable screening process, where we really looked at folks with that direct experience and determined, you know, who would move forward in that interview process based on that developed questions, that we're really focused on what we need the position to do. The PCOB ranked candidates based on their responses to those questions. So I would say minimum qualifications is just a very small part of any kind of a hiring process. And the real, uh, work that gets done to screen a candidate really comes through both the secondary screening mechanisms that are used in the interview process.
In looking at the candidates, do you, do you utilize individuals within human resources, or do you look for outside? Let's say, for example, have you considered perhaps, if Milwaukee has an IM, have you considered utilizing those, asking them to serve, to serve as a reviewer? I'm also reminded, too, when you think about other states and cities of comparable size that utilize IMs, I'm reminded of Denver, Colorado, and other states and cities. Have you considered looking at what their history is, what some of the hiccups are, and what do they do to fix or to remedy?
Yeah, Alder, thank you so much for your questions. Some of what you're asking are really questions that are a function of that equitable hire plan application that we go through. So we have parts of that process that are really intended to identify for us, folks who will be subject matter experts and be able to provide us with some of that, some of that really direct feedback. I will note that during the initial screening process for, for minimum qualifications, it is an HR review that folks can appeal, but it's really based on the specific minimum qualification language. And so, yes, we do typically use folks who are subject matter experts. I think for us, because we really prioritize the expertise within the field of police oversight, we really got, had great candidates, and were able to get through folks who had pretty significant experience. But yes, in that, in that evaluation, in that equitable hire plan that we will be going through with the interim for the permanent position, we absolutely pull in expert, will pull in experts to do things like screen questions that they're required to answer and that sort of thing. This was somewhat of an expedited process for the interim, but we were really delighted with the quality of the candidates that we got.
You know, I'm really concerned. I'm really concerned about it, primarily because of the past history. And when I ask, you know, what kinds of things did you do, you know, in terms of a revision of the job description, to, to fix it, okay? Because if it's not fixed, then are we not going down the same tunnel again? That's, that's, I'm, I'm, this is why, it's bothersome, to say the least.
I'm not sure if that's a question, Alder, but I will tell you that we have a lot of folks on staff throughout the city that are, have been really devoted, myself included, to trying to make sure that this office functions effectively and not repeating patterns that we've had in the past. And so, you know, we can't ever make any promises for what will happen, or whether or not we've fixed any potential issues, but I think, you know, there are some structural things around this office that, that a really qualified independent monitor will, would I'm sure, bring forward to help remedy any of the potential ineffectiveness that might have occurred in the past. But that, that will require us to hire someone into that position to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Let's see, Alder Evers, is it for Erin? No. Alder Knox, is it for Erin? Alder Knox.
So, so Erin, I'll be more specific. So I'm sure you, you have a process from application, screening those, that moves it to, is there a middle process before the actual interview? No? Yes?
Yes, so in this particular process, we posted the position. We got thirty-seven applicants. We went through the minimum qualification screening. That was done by one of our HR analysts. After that minimum qualification screening, we had sixteen or seventeen that made it to the next round. We then went through a screening process where we identified some of the priorities of the PCOB. Some of those priorities included experience, community building, experience with investigations, experience as a direct independent monitor, and education and that sort of thing. So we then ranked and scored those candidates based on that experience, and nine were then sent to interview. And I, I believe we ended up interviewing six or seven on Saturday, and coming up with a few that went on to the, to the PCOB meeting tomorrow.
So, so they all ranked or rated at each stage of the process?
So in the first screening, they aren't ranked. They are passed or failed based on minimum qualifications. In the second stage, they are ranked based on qualifications, and the top several are sent in the interview. They are reranked entirely after the interview process and then sent on.
So at each stage, you have subject area experts evaluating them?
So in this case, what the, in the sec, in the, so it sort of depends upon how that happens. In this kind of an evaluation process, we have an HR analyst that does that work. Sometimes we do what are called supplemental questions, in which case we bring in subject matter experts to evaluate those subject supplemental questions. Because this wasn't a supplemental question process, it was a comparable eval, and a human resources analyst goes through that screening process, ranking them according to the criteria that are most important to the, to the hiring authority, and that hiring authority is effectively the PCOB, with me sort of assisting as a hiring manager.
So, so did any of the members of?
Alder, I mean, well, I appreciate the education on the hiring process. I'll remind us that what's before us is a budget amendment.
I got it.
Not a discussion of a hiring process.
We would dial this row for questions for her, so I should be able to ask my questions about the process.
You can ask your questions, but I just ask you to keep them related to the budget amendment.
Well, my question is, did any of the members of the PCOB who are not subject area experts participate in any of those processes to the interview? That's my question.
So this is something of an expedited process, that members of the PCOB were long-term members who have gone through significant oversight training. I would not say they are not somewhat subject matter experts. They may not be sort of folks who do that work as a part of their normal, everyday profession, but...
Or folks who are managers, because you evaluate the manager.
Yeah. You know, I also sat through all of those interviews and... You know, I also sat through all of those interviews and, you know, you know, they made, they made very effective decisions. I wouldn't...
I was just keyed on her question on the process, what went wrong last time, how it went this time. That's fine. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Matthews, is it for Erin? Alder Matthews, I just have a question. We're not here to talk about a hiring process.
I am, my questions aren't about the hiring process, and they hopefully are very fast. Can you, either the amount of time that they've been in the position or approximately, like when they were hired, are you, sorry, this is for HR Director Erin, can you let us know when or when they were hired or how long both the office manager or data analyst have been part of the office?
So the data manager or data analyst was hired last year as an hourly employee and subsequently, I'm hoping this is right, subsequently made permanent. The office assistant was hired a couple of years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Verveer, is it for Erin? No. Alder, okay. Then I believe Alder Vitterver, we are back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Patterson, curious as to when you learned about this amendment coming forward?
It was, I don't remember exactly when, I think it was late Thursday. Alder Knox suggested that he was contemplating an amendment from the floor and asked me for some updated figures from when we submitted the Horizon list ask during the cap process. And I think those were provided to him on Friday. And then I saw the draft amendment on Sunday.
Thank you. And can you remind us, it seems to me that I recall when we were conversing about the body worn camera issue, that you had some very specific ideas about your timeline of implementation and what it would take and how you wanted to roll it out in a stepwise process. Could you just remind us of what it was you said at that time, gist of it?
Well, the quick gist is I need some time to assess kind of where things are at currently. We're experiencing a pretty significant backlog, Alder, when it comes to open records requests and video. Right now, if one of you would ask for redacted video, it would take us five to six months to fulfill that request. So we're pretty far behind. So we're going to analyze our workflow. It's possible we may have to work with HR to revisit our reorganization that we did in records, you know, several years ago and actually update that again to kind of get more current with the types of requests that we're seeing now. But also, we need to assess how to phase this in to best meet the current demand that we're receiving for video and then be responsive to implementation. So we wouldn't want to just thrust, you know, 492 cameras on the department because frankly, we just would not be able to sustain any responsiveness to the community when it comes to open records requests.
And have you done an initial budget assessment of what it would take even to do a phased approach of body worn cameras?
Well, the capital amendment that is on the Horizon list, we basically totaled the ask for body worn cameras and related equipment that we would need for existing staff. So that's the 2.5-ish million dollar figure that you see there. We would still need to respond to the operating deficiency. And so if pressed, which I felt like we were a little bit further Horizon list ask, that's where we came forward with the five positions. Now, in full transparency, that was somewhat also with the current backlog in mind. So it's very possible, once we start to address the backlog, we look at our internal processes, to be very transparent, I may come back to you and say we need additional staff on top of those five. So that's why I've always been very supportive of a very intentional phased approach to full implementation, just so that we're being, you know, as responsive to you as the elected body, but also to the community with future requests.
And just to be clear, you did not ask for this amendment?
No, I did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Let's see, Alder Okovitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Alder, President Vitterver asked most of my questions, I guess, to put slightly different spin on it. If this amendment were to pass, do you think you would be able to operationalize this money for body worn cameras next year? Or would it mostly go towards the current backlog of redacting video?
Well, it would certainly provide some flexibility, frankly, and the funding then to implement immediate needs that I think could both address the backlog, but also address what we view as needs for implementation later down the line.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And it's also for Chief Patterson. Chief, Sean Barnes, when, my understanding going back and reading some of what he had to say regarding the report, he estimated that it would be anywhere from 3.2 million to 6.7 million in costs to acquire the technology and related accessories and software. Do you, does that track with you, that range seem?
I wrote that for him, so yes.
Okay. All right. And it is also your understanding that Chief Barnes asked that these costs be adopted in the 2026 capital budget? Do you recall that as well at that time?
That was, that was certainly his goal, but that was not something that we brought forward this year.
I understand. And the purpose of that was so that the body worn cameras would be rolled out in 2027, somewhat contingent upon this capital budget expenditure in the 2026 budget? That was at least Chief Barnes' timeline, is that correct?
Right. And I think, though, that didn't reflect the need that existed even when he was still with the department for the operating impacts around staff.
And as you say, you were interim chief in April of this past year when the agency request went forward, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you did not put forth this request in the capital budget?
I identified it as a future need towards the end of the memo, but I did not bring forward an amendment request.
And similarly, you were also interim chief in July when the agency request for the operating budget went forth. And you did not put forth a request for positions to staff IT personnel, civilian personnel in your office to handle body worn camera footage, is that correct?
No, that's correct. But to clarify, I'm a stickler for the rules, so I followed the guidelines laid forward by the mayor, and I did not bring forward a supplementary request.
Well, I appreciate that. And at October 13th and 14th, during the budget presentations at Finance, had at that time any alders approached you about this amendment on October 13th or October 20th?
No.
And on October 27th, when we voted at Finance Committee, had any of the alders approached you about this particular amendment on October 27th?
No.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Verveer, is it for the chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Indeed, it is. Chief, most of my questions also have been asked and answered as it relates to body worn cameras. And I appreciate that you reminded us or perhaps shared for some watching for the first time what your current thoughts are on the timeline of implementation of body worn cameras in your department. Just for everyone's benefit, your responses are consistent with your responses at Finance Committee, both hearings and amendment, when we were discussing the capital budget Horizon list amendment, which the council approved tonight as part of the amended capital budget for 2026. So here's my question, though, to put you on the spot a little further, Chief. Knowing what you know now, with the assumption that this operating budget amendment will be unsuccessful this evening, what do you think will be your position next year when you have the opportunity as our permanent chief to make your official, both capital and operating budget, agency request to the Finance Department?
Will I come back talking about body worn cameras? Yes, absolutely, I will.
Yes. Well, we'll be sure to ask you about them no matter what, of course.
Sounds good.
Yeah. But do you, do you think that as of tonight, you would be ready to formally request, whether it be fit neatly within the mayor's budget instructions or not, but you'd be, you'd be ready to begin implementation, further implementation of body worn cameras in 2027?
I am fully ready to assess and to come up with a good, comprehensive plan. But again, you know, the turn of 2026, we would not be ready to start deploying cameras at that time. We need, we need time to, again, address the current process flows and backlogs that we're experiencing and really solidify our plan with, with how to move forward with implementation of any number of cameras, frankly.
But you would likely be able to begin some implementation in 2027 as part of our 2026 budget deliberations?
Yes. Yes, I think so, yes.
Just for those that, you know, think that we're way behind in doing so.
So fingers crossed, or we can move from the Horizon list. But yes, I know that's for next spring.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Mayor, just for clarification, Chief, body worn cameras on the Horizon list was, who approached you about whether you were ready and how we were, whether we were ready to implement body worn cameras and how did it end up on the Horizon list? I just need to clear the air because I'm feeling a sense...
You did, Alder, and thank you for that.
Okay. I wanted to make that clear because it has been alluded to that this sponsoring body pushed this without any consultation. We've been thinking about this, talking about this, and having this conversation, and it ended up on the Horizon list. I just want to make sure that that's clear. Okay.
That's correct.
All right. My next question is, is that there was a video, and this is for staff, is that, are we able to clear that up? We haven't gotten to that point yet.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, Alder, but this is the time for questions for staff.
Okay, then I will start. There was a, this is to staff, there was a video related to body worn cameras that we wanted the body to see. Were we able to queue that up, staff?
I'm not sure what staff you're referring to, Alder.
I don't, no, they were not?
I don't, unless you prearranged with council staff to have something shown, we're not able to show a video on short notice.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions for staff?
Yes. I guess my question is, so if this proposal passes, then would that, because I think I heard you say that...
Alder, I'm sorry, who is your question for?
The chief.
Go ahead.
I heard you say something like, this could be probably helpful for you addressing some of your backlog, depending on people you bring on board. But my real question is, so let's say you got these positions late in 2026, would that accelerate the process of implementing body worn cameras rather than waiting for 2027? And it would take you a period of time to implement and get up to speed?
If I'm understanding you correctly, if we onboarded new positions per this, per this amendment, well, certainly we'd be much in a better position to bring on the technology in '27 than, than we would be otherwise, yes.
And probably deploy earlier in 2027.
Yes, more than likely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue with questions? No other Alders in the queue with questions? So what's before us is floor amendment number two, and it has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is about where we are now. The effectiveness of body cameras depends on the policies governing their use. Body cameras have provided a powerful tool for police accountability, primarily through providing verifiable evidence and increased transparency. This amendment is introduced to provide groundwork for phased-in policy and careful implementation rather than to sit as a placeholder on the Horizon list in 2026. We start with providing our newly sworn-in police chief with the ability to fully phase-in implementation of body worn cameras within the Madison Police Department. The opportunity for the city to hire an independent monitor, provide that person with the essentials for effective monitoring and goals to achieve these goals. Enhanced safety, accountability, transparency, public trust, evidence gathering, storage costs, and improved police training, an opportunity to phase-in challenges and limitations. Hiring an independent monitor is essential to the above process. The Office of the Independent Monitor has an interim at the head. An estimate timeframe of recruitment, interviewing, confirming, and hiring could be a long process. Having that position filled is critical. The IM is hired as the external expert with an official, with an office staff to provide impartial oversight to ensure compliance with rules and agreements, safety protocols. The independent monitor will not be part of an interim team, which would allow the monitor provide an unbiased perspective hired to maintain credibility. At this time, the position of independent monitor is vacant, and the office is currently staffed by an intern. Redirecting those funds is what the amendment proposes. The cost of not having an effective, functioning department could possibly put the city at financial risk with lawsuits. Settlements thus far. Total known financial settlements since 2006 estimated at over $9 million. The initial cost of body cameras estimated less than $4 million. If no action now, when? The money allocated to the Office of the Independent Monitor, 2020 to 2025, the total budget allocated to the Office of Independent Monitor was over $2 million, 245694. As of 10/30/25, spent was $803,0393. 2020, 2025, total budget allocated to the PCOB only $185,580. 2020, 2025, total budget allocated to PCOB and spent was $73,233. The surplus was transferred to the rainy day fund or the general fund. And I read this into the record for this reason. Number one, the independent monitor and the Office of Independent, of the Office of Independent Monitor has been poorly funded and enough, enough, and it's, I've heard back and forth as that they've been on the chopping block for, for several years. I was elected Alder in 2015, and now it's 2025, and we're still contemplating about body worn cameras. When I was elected in 2025, I served on the library board, and it was... I, when I was elected in 2025, I served on the library board, and it was talk of the Imagination Center then, and it was in and off the chopping board. And it is now 2025 that the Imagination Center will come into fruition. It is because there was a constant push by Alders that this was important, and the Imagination Center is going to happen for the City of Madison. It's the same thing about body worn cameras. If we're going to have an effective Office of Independent Monitor and a police, civil, civilian oversight board, it must be properly funded. It is not properly funded. And the reason that we pushed forward this amendment is to make sure that it doesn't just sit on the Horizon list, that it is implemented as a phased in entity, as our police chief has said. And so I personally am glad that we pushed it forward. We're standing on the cliff, but it takes a bold movement. If we're going to be effective and if we are going to provide the sense of oversight that we have been asking about, either we're going to properly fund this commission, the Office of Independent Monitor, or we're not. And in order to make it efficient, we have to have certain things in place. If we can no longer depend on cell phone cameras to have a picture of exactly what happened, I was impressed with the grandmother of Tony Robinson. On that evening when I came back into Madison, I went back to St. Louis, Missouri, and I looked at where we were in terms of a city that is not moving on, moving forward with understanding where black and brown people were. I went to Ferguson, Missouri, and I realized that there was no equity, there was no Office of Independent Monitor, there was no police civilian oversight board, and that's why we got what we had. When I also looked at the amount of money that the city has paid out in assessments because of of legal ramifications, it's that we don't have the proper equipment to support the Office of the Independent Monitor or the Civil Civilian Oversight Committee. And without body worn cameras, you do not have an efficient look at what happened. I talked with former police chief Ray, Noble Ray, and he said, if only there was a body worn camera on that stairwell. The only persons that know exactly what happened on that stairwell that fateful evening was one Tony Robinson, and he's deceased, and it was the police officer. We cannot continue saying we don't have enough money to fund body worn cameras. We cannot afford to move forward with a city that continuously is growing and the capacity of which is growing and not equip our police officers with body worn cameras so that they can be held accountable for how they operate in our city. So I am not sorry that we stepped out on faith and pushed this so that the, this body will realize that it cannot continue to say that we cannot afford body worn cameras. We must realize that we cannot not afford having body worn cameras. And to have our new police chief, who will really make sure that his department is operating with those efficiencies that we want to see, I am completely supportive of the independent monitor and also the the civilian oversight board. But we can't have that efficiency if we don't put our money where our mouth is. And so I thank Alder Knox for pushing it forward. I thank that Alder Pritchard for having the boldness to step out in faith, and I absolutely am not apologetic for pushing this in front of of you, the Alders, because you cannot continue to say that you don't have enough money.
Alder, you're just here where you're at 10 minutes.
I got it all in.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Glenn?
Hi, thank you. September 2, 2020, nine hours. I was one of the people on there till 3:00 in the morning when this board was voted in. I was part of, early on, of bringing it to fruition and one of the community people that fought for it to be here. I would would dig into a conversation. I don't think this, for me, as maybe I'm being a rookie right now, is the time and place for a conversation around body worn cameras, taking money, handing it over $400,000. So I'm just going to read what I wrote, but I'm hearing so much conversation, and I just want us all to remember the process that we all believe in. The Office of the Independent Monitor wasn't created on a whim. It was the result of years of community organizing, town halls, listening sessions, and grassroots advocacy. Hundreds, me being one of them, of Madison residents, particularly those impacted by policing, me being one of them, spent countless hours sharing their experiences, articulating their needs, and demanding accountability. Community coalitions brought diverse voices together. The common council held public hearings where residents testified. Task forces analyzed best practices. This was democracy in action, messy, slow, deliberate, and inclusive. And now, with a floor amendment introduced at the last minute, we're being asked to undo all of that community work. No public hearings, no testimony from the communities who fought for the OIM, no analysis of the impact, just a quick vote to eliminate what took years of democratic process to build? This is the antithesis of community-driven governance. The floor amendment circumvents the proper budget process that allows for public input through analysis and thorough analysis. Major funding shifts of over $400,000 deserve public hearings, community testimony, and full council deliberation, not last-minute amendments that limit transparency and citizen participation. The communities who built OIM and PCOB deserve better than having their work erased without even being consulted. This amendment is performative. It's designed to force a vote that looks good in a press release rather than actually solves problems. Real governance means doing the hard work of budget analysis, listening to constituents, and building consensus. This is governance by soundbite, designed to create a tough-on-accountability oversight moment without regard for the community voice. When OIM and PCOB was created, we said we valued community input, especially from black and brown communities, from young people, from young people stopped on the streets, from families who lost loved ones. Those voices shaped the PCOB and OIM. Now we're being asked to silence them without even inviting them back to the table. If we vote for this amendment, we're saying those voices only mattered until it became politically inconvenient. We have budget processes for a reason. When we bypass them with floor amendments, we undermine the democratic principle that citizens have a right to weigh in on how their tax dollars are spent. This isn't how transparent government works. This isn't how we honor the community organizing that makes Madison's government responsive. Eliminating the funding for independent civilian oversight removes the checks and balances a transparent government requires. You can't claim to support accountability while defunding the office that provides it. The OIM's analysis has exposed significant problems. That's exactly why independent oversight matters and exactly why this amendment amendment is so dangerous. Rushing through major budget reallocations without proper vetting means we don't understand the full implications. What happens to ongoing OIM investigations? What about PCOB cases in progress? What are the real implementation costs for body worn cameras? Who staffs them? This amendment doesn't answer those questions because it wasn't designed to. It was designed to score political points, not solve problems. They showed up, they organized, they testified, they waited through the process, they trusted us to listen. Not without asking those same community members. Without hearings, without transparency, we're being asked to eliminate what they built. That's not good governance. That's not respect in the democratic process, and that is not honoring honoring the community voice that this body claims to value. If the sponsors believe body worn cameras need more funding, bring it to the proper budget process where the public can participate, where the communities who built OIM and PCOB can be heard, and where we can do our jobs with full information. Don't let years of community organizing be erased by a floor amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure what my colleagues were hoping to accomplish tonight. It's apparent to me that this amendment's not going to pass. When Alder Harrington McKinney, bless her heart, says that we need body worn cameras and we shouldn't say we don't have the money for it, the passage of this amendment, Mayor, we'll not buy a single camera. Because the Horizon list would still be the Horizon list, and the capital budget item on the Horizon list would remain. This is an operating budget amendment. Not a single dollar of that $4,000 will be allocated to purchasing one camera. The operating money that wasn't used in previous budget cycles that was returned to the rainy day fund, if it were attempted to use some of that money for a capital expenditure, it would be subject, from what I understand from our finance director, to the expenditure restraint mechanism. It's not an easy matter to take money that wasn't spent in the operating budget and simply spend it on a capital budget item. Body worn cameras would not be purchased, not a single one, if this were to pass. I also don't understand what the three Alders were hoping to accomplish, knowing that it's very unlikely that this would pass, when there is a better means of doing so, which is what has been alluded to by Alder Verveer and just now by the Alder from the 18th. And that is a more collaborative process. Now, my Alder to the left here, from the Alder from the 14th, said the reason why he didn't speak to the Chair of the PCOB, Maya Pearson, even though she is his constituent, is because she doesn't talk to him. So why should I talk to her, is what he said to me. Whether she is in his district or not, she is still the Chair of the committee. Whether he has personal animus against her or disrespect, the responsible thing to do is to inform the people who would be impacted by such an amendment. The responsible thing to do, Mayor, would be inform the colleagues that are sitting before you today so that we could work with you and work with with the Finance Department and work with the police chief. That is what a collaborative process, and I remember many times when Alders, and even Alder Harrington McKinney, voted against a development project, saying that the public's concern and resident engagement was not, did not function properly. We did not listen to our residents. We didn't listen to our constituents. But yet, we are putting forth a suggested amendment that was not announced publicly, and nobody had a chance to register and express their opinion in a in a collaborative democratic process. This was performative. It was a political stunt. It was doomed to fail. I call upon all my colleagues, and those in particular who want to see body worn cameras passed in this city, to work collectively as a body openly in conversations that we can all participate in, where we bring our disagreements to the table and hash them out in a collaborative manner, not secretively. But let's do it in the way that Chief Barnes suggested, that we would actually pay for the cameras in a capital budget amendment, and then put in a process where we can ramp up the hirings of people, the staff people, to implement them and phase them in over time in a way that's operational and a way that will be successful. Lastly, Mayor, this has been presented as a zero-sum game, that somehow or another, money for the OIM and the PCOB is is money that we should take away in order to be able to insufficiently, by the way, fund body worn cameras. Why are we putting these two things in opposition? You know, I don't always agree with Alex Salutos, but he actually had a very interesting memo that he put forth, and I'm going to just briefly close by quoting parts of it. He said, "There have been deployment problems, not strategic flaws." He talks about fixing these, and he addresses them, and he includes insufficient resources and unclear expectations. A three-person office tasked with monitoring a major police department was set up to struggle from the start. The absence of clear performance metrics and regular accountability reviews allowed problems to persist unchecked." What does he suggest? Not an endpoint at this critical juncture, but moving forward with better deployment, not defunding. But suggesting that we would put in opposition to one another in a zero-sum kind game framing, something that Alder Glenn is quite clear, was a robust political process of community engagement, the Office of the Independent Monitor and the PCOB. I was on council then. I know what those late meetings were like. I also was instrumental in achieving the compromise that brought about the pilot on the North Side, if you recall, Alder Harrington McKinney and Alder Isidore Knox and whoever else was on council then. This is something for council, and a big controversial item in our community we should be working together on. We don't introduce something at the last minute in a floor amendment and suggest that that is good government. It is not good government. It's actually in opposition to everything that we, that the history of this body has held dear for decades. So I'm frustrated, I'm angry, this was always going to fail, it never should have been offered. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. So there was, there's been a lot of talk of different things tonight. The first of which is the effectiveness of the OIM and the PCOB, and the fact that it was on the chopping block last year, and it was decided to continue to be funded. There's also been talk of metrics, and I would say if if the understanding shared at the very beginning of this discussion, that last year, there were, there was no complaint intake process, there were no cases, and there was no annual report. In the last year, there was, the office did launch a successful complaint intake process. They went from those zero or maybe one cases under investigation to around 14, and they did submit their annual report. So I would say that they've at least shown a pretty significant increase in the metrics that we do have currently, and that is with a not fully staffed office and a never fully staffed office. There's also been a lot of talk about about that setup of the office and efficiency and things like that, and I would say that the yearly budget numbers tell a story of the challenges and the amount of effort and time that it takes for a brand-new board to hire an independent and the amount of effort and time that it takes for a brand-new board to hire an independent monitor, to then staff a three-person office. And it takes a lot of time and a lot of work and a lot of effort. And folks not part of that agency, other folks in the city, have also invested a lot of time and a lot of work and a lot of assistance in this process. And so, it would definitely not be efficient to completely shut down both the PCOB and the OIM right now. It would be the city going backwards. And I come from a background in clinical research. Accountability and transparency and oversight are extremely important to me. And so, when we're talking about accountability and transparency for body cams and for the Police Department and for the Office of the Independent Monitor and the PCOB, we have to ask ourselves, as a city, do we want true transparency or do we want the illusion of transparency? I wrote this down before the beginning of the discussion, but I disagree that this is putting the cart before the horse, having the OIM now and the PCOB now and not having body cams yet. I would say that the accountability and transparency mechanism must be in place before body cams can be implemented. If anything, stripping funds from the PCOB and the OIM to go towards staffing for operation of the full implementation of body cameras, when the, right now, body camera implementation is on the Horizon list, would be putting the cart before the horse. And lastly, I do just quickly want to mention with the public input and transparency of this process, of this amendment, the method of putting it through as a budget amendment already makes it so that none of the registrants were able to document their opposition or support directly to this item with their registration. Most people found out about this this afternoon, and even with that lack of notice, the emails and public comments that we did receive tonight were largely against this floor budget amendment. And I will say that I was surprised to see this presented in such a way that did completely disregard the public process and public input and transparency at the city level. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Pritchett?
One final note. Ultimately, the decision to have body-worn cameras versus not, the decision to decide whether or not the PCOB and the OIM should go, you know, those are the things that are on the board now. But let me ask you a question. For the next minute or so, what I want you to do is to ask yourself a question. If you walked out this building now and found yourself with a police interaction, you are arrested. The arresting officer does not have a body-worn camera. It's your word versus whoever the bystander sees what goes on. You're taken to the police precinct. Arraignment is coming up. Now, I ask you this question. Do you really care whether or not this amendment was not properly vetted? Or do you care that your innocence is depended on a bystander? Or would it be preferable to have an officer with a body-worn camera? I ask you to ask yourself that question. What would you want, okay, in your defense? Let your conscience be your guide. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to share a couple notes and then a statement, or quick statement. So, the first thing I just want to say is, last year, for those of us who were on council, I think the bulk of us who were on council during budget season last time, we sort of stuck to our agreement to the PCOB and OIM, that we were going to hold them to some higher standards, ask for some reporting, and ask them to clean up some challenges and issues. I think for the most part, they've kept their word, and I know I and some other Alders have done our best to try to help them be able to hold, you know, hold fast to what we agreed to last year, or at least what the conversation was last year. So, I just want to remind us of that. The second thing I want to say is, someone noted to the cameras being on the Horizon list as a pie in the sky kind of thing. I can see how that comment could be taken seriously, but I also want to say, when you really find something like this to be important, then it's Alder's responsibility to do the legwork. So, when the Imagin... For me, the Imagination Center was about bringing you all to my district. Anybody who would come, I would bring you over. I took a good number of y'all on tours. I took y'all to shelters. I took Alder Verveer and I think Tana, the library director, on a highway ride by mistake. So, it's just like, you know, I took anybody who wants to come. Just recently, I had Alder O'Brien, Deena Nina, or Alder Martinez Rutherford, Alder Matthews, and Alder Glenn was scheduled too, but she has, you know, she had a scheduling change. So, I want to say I appreciate y'all, but I just want to say for the Alders of the amendment, like, in order to get something done, we don't, I don't always agree with even the people who've been coming to my district, you know what I mean? Like, but at minimum, we have to figure out how to work with each other and get out of our silos with each other and our silos. That's how you get something from being a pie in the sky to reality, like, we have walls now, almost, at the Imagination Center. The third thing I want to say is, I absolutely, when I saw the amendment, a little bit after we got the email from Finance, I definitely got on the phone. And what I saw is that we had 24 emails who asked us to not support this amendment, but I just kept thinking to myself, as I'm sitting here drafting my notes, what if I had, like, two weeks? How much conversation could we have had in two weeks? That would have been, I think, pretty dope. Even for people who don't support, you know, no matter where you stand on body-worn cameras, we owe it to people to give them opportunity to participate in the process. All right, so, the other thing I want to say, in case Alders like me, sometimes we get crazy schedules and we can't really read all of our emails, but I happen to read, I read every single email we got, whether it was the one or two who didn't support it, but I absolutely read all of them. And I just want to share one consistent, constant theme across those emails that did not support this amendment. The residents described this move as sneaky, dishonest, and deliberately obscuring public involvement. And I absolutely agree with those folks. So, I just want to say, by finessing this amendment at the last minute, the sponsors have effectively told residents across the city that they don't want them to be part of the conversation. Unless, of course, they have the Alder's ear and they were part of this planning action, or they were the handful of Mattisonians who were on an email thread with a heads-up about this amendment. So, this amendment harms our community's ability to have trust, informed dialogue about the cameras, and what thoughtful, transparent implementation may look like. What's happening tonight about whether we should have cameras isn't about whether or not we should have cameras. It's about actually how we make decisions that impact public safety, civil rights, and public trust. This amendment tries to reframe this as an anti-camera debate when the real issue is process. We should be asking, how do we budget for cameras responsibly? How do we ensure oversight, access, and accountability with the greater community at the table? Those are the conversations Madison deserves to have, not a rush, behind-the-scenes maneuver that gerrymanders away wide public input and dismantles the very office designed to hold our systems accountable. The OIM and the Board were created because the city promises residents transparency and independent oversight, but to dismantle it in this last-minute finesse while claiming to build trust through cameras is the height of disrespect to folks across the city. You can't build trust like this by erasing accountability. So, I stand with the people, the residents, the advocates, and the faith leaders who hit us up today, standing out, or, you know, who spoke out against this amendment. I really urge not just my colleagues to reject it, but I actually would love for my colleagues, the three Alders who supported this and put this forward, to actually withdraw it. I think withdrawing it and coming at this differently would show the community that you actually respect a wider, you know, a wider perspective of the community, and that you are not looking to finesse them out of their voice and taking part in these kinds of processes. But either way, because we're all for community, for transparency, for doing the work the right way, and the open, with all the people we serve, not just those who are part of a few Alders, group chats or email threads, we deserve better than this kind of policymaking. I'm not sure if this was even policymaking. We deserve integrity, accountability, and a process that truly includes and respects the public. So, again, I just, the last thing I want to say, I didn't see myself say this tonight, but I am always willing to meet with any Alder, whether you like me or not, I don't really care. I'm more interested in how we're serving people. Are we working together for the greater good? Are we only working for the greater good of reelection? Like, what's our end goal? Here's our end goal, a healthier community? And then, what does our, we just came from something about equity, right? Like, at the top of our agenda, it always asks us who's not at the table, like, who's at the table, who benefits? And I just ask my colleagues, did you all look at that statement before you put this forward? And ask yourselves, who was missing? Who benefited? Who gains from this? And I would encourage you to withdraw it and come at this differently in a way that really honors and respects the community and respects your colleagues to a degree. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder, colleagues, please take this with my best intentions, because I'm struggling to say this subtly or professionally, but this discussion in certain moments has been pointed, and I think it needs to be toned down and focused on the amendment itself. Anyway, speaking about the amendment, this entire year, I have not been a huge fan of the OIM, but I have had discussions with several Alders, city staff, the OIM staff, and current and former members of the PCOB members about the OIM, several of its structural deficiencies and non-structural deficiencies. And the more I focused on the OIM and the discussions I had with these folks, the more I learned that the biggest problems were not the structural ones, because those can be addressed, but it had more so, from my experience, to do with the former IM themselves. I'm not going to get into the details, obviously, for personnel reasons, but if you had asked me back in August, I would have probably introduced a budget amendment myself, removing funding from the OIM. But where I am right now with the discussions I've had is that I do have the belief and the trust that the PCOB specifically has the capability to properly manage the Independent Monitor that will be hired in the next couple of weeks, and then the permanent one after that. And then I believe that the future Independent Monitor will be able to properly manage their office and the staff as well. That being said, there does need to be some form of reforms in ordinance that I hope will be collaborative and meaningful made in the coming months. This is not my full defense of the OIM, I do want to say. However, I do really genuinely believe that there is real potential this upcoming year that I did not see for the OIM in the past year. Regarding body-worn cameras, I've said this in my very first budget two years ago, and I'll say it again, the time for body-worn camera was 10 years ago. We're a little bit behind the ball, in my opinion. I think they are a vital tool for transparency and accountability, but I don't believe that eliminating the OIM entirely is the answer to funding body-worn cameras. If this amendment had a source of funding that I would have agreed with, then I would have voted in favor, but right now, I'm voting no. And yes, maybe the cart did come before the horse, but that doesn't mean you killed the horse at the end of the day, you know? So, additionally, there has been some discussion about the subject area expertise of the PCOB members hiring the OIM. And I just want to take a minute to remind everyone that none of us are subject area experts in hiring a chief clerk or transportation director or anything like that either, but we did that unanimously just a short couple of months ago. So, I do think there is that double standard there that needs to be addressed. But that's all. I'll be voting no for this amendment. I think most of my colleagues are as well, and I will keep it short there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox for the second time?
Thank you. Just wanted to highlight a few things here. You know, one question is, what has the OMB and the PCOB accomplished to date? We need to sit down and ask that question. We've read the report, but has anybody told us how many complaints they've actually completed and moved on somewhere? Nobody asks those questions. I was at the PCOB when they were proposing things like $10,000 honorariums. And then I had to be the one to say, listen, that's not reasonable, that makes no sense. They love to give out $50 gift cards to get people to show up to their meetings. You know, I think we have a responsibility where we have a sick or broken workplace. We really do. But what we do is, we don't want to deal with it, we don't want to get our hands dirty. So, we let it keep going on. I don't know. How many thousands of dollars a year? You know, we do have taxpayers that we have to answer to, too. And they're the ones who don't come out in droves, sending emails and all of that. They don't do that. You know what they do? They come to each one of us and complain about it. How high our taxes are? Why is this not working? That's what they do. So, I don't believe in publicity stuff. People who know me, I don't even do that. And there's a lot of hypocrisy going on here with, last year, I talked to several Alders who were thinking, just like me, you were being honest about eliminating it. But now, they try to act like they didn't have those conversations, you know? It's like, that is hypocritical. And they shouldn't lie to the public. So, and let's be honest, some of us don't talk to each other. Can we be honest about that? But no, we're going to all try to be nice, we all talk to each other. That's not true. And you know it's not true. I can count on one hand Alders who've never called me or won't call me. And every new Alder that came on this board, I called up and invited to talk to them. Some of them took me up on it, some of them didn't. I'm not going to make a big deal of it, but let's just be honest, let's stop being disingenuous about it. So, ask those questions. How many complaints have been resolved, investigated, moved on? Have we used that fund that we have to let people go where they find just cause and try to get their case taken care of? It is a risk management issue. Because if we don't know what's going out there, or something happens, guess what? We always pay our nose. You don't think that those instances happen, that we don't know what happened and we don't pay? Go look at the risk management report. You're dreaming. The taxpayers pay. That's who pays. So, I'm just telling you, we could always revisit the Office, but it's not effective. And the best citizens oversight experts say, you got to have that critical data that you get from body-worn cameras. They have no data. So, what are they doing? Huh? What are they doing? Having public meetings out here, giving people $50 gift cards to show up, and no action. So, okay, we're going to be responsible for carrying this forward. Yeah, we created ordinances to create this body, but you don't do the same thing when something's not being effective. And I served on that committee. And I raised all those issues. I'm in this seat today because of that commission. They frustrated me so much, I said I was going to run for reelection. Literally. That's the truth. Some people know it, because they were in the room when I said it. Okay, so, what do we want to accomplish? A commitment to body-worn cameras. We've been dragging this thing on for 15 years. Come on. The chief talked about, if he got these resources, he could probably deal, not only accelerate getting us there, but deal with a backlog in his office and allow him to prepare to implement it. I'm sorry, you're right. For a lot of things, it is a pie in the sky. And that's a fact. Because you could go back and count how many things were on there that did not make it or got lost or forgot about. So, that's what I'm here for. Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't take it to the washer, it probably would have killed me off in the washer anyway. Let's just be honest about that. But you know what? Everybody's going to go on record... Everybody's going to go on record today, or if they support body-worn cameras. You could skate around it, dance around it, however you want to play it, you're either committed to it or you're not. Quite frankly, I don't believe Madison is committed to it. 15 years of things have shown we're not committed to it. Seriously. When? If not now, when? Have we put a little, you know, skin in the game? So this man here, the chief, can get things going next year? But are we all, we can't afford it, we can't afford it? But we could afford bus rapid transit, can't we? Come on now. This is a public safety issue that's serious. You heard what Joanne said, you could go out here, something could happen to you, and no one will be able to know what really happened.
Alder, please address other members of the body by their title.
I didn't, I don't think I mentioned anybody's name, did I?
You did just now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, Alder. Pritchett.
Thank you, Alder.
So, that's what this is about. I never propose any grant staying stuff. I usually talk with somebody, Mike or something, we sign on to it together. I've never done this before. Okay? And guess what? I'm not the only one that offered one here, too. Okay? Can we be honest about that? Okay, so the bottom line is, we ought to be willing to move forward. That's what I'm trying to accomplish. But if it fails, it fails. It will look like we always look. They say they want body-worn cameras, but they won't do a single thing to move forward to it. We just won't. And let's all be honest about it. I mean, that is what I intended. I talked to some Alders that I talked to that liked that idea. I had talked to some other officers, Alders, last year about that, about, yeah, about, we've talked about this. Even their own staff talked about they were doing contingency plans to avoid losing their funding. This ain't new. Come on. Let's just be honest for a change. I don't sell, I'm not out here to sell anybody. No, I don't. But I tell you, if somebody tells me they don't respect me, I'm not going to communicate with them. I'm not. Why would I? And neither would you. So, I think you all should, can we, for a change, make a step forward to something that we all, all the data has said we needed? This OMB can't do anything, or they can't do anything without data. They need the data to be effective. All they're doing is having happy Philly meetings. I sat in on them. So don't shake your head, they are trying to get that $25 for the meeting, and that's it. I'm just being honest. And most of the people who were on there when I was on there, they all come from organizations that stated they were anti-police. That was the biggest flaw we had. They went on record saying they wanted to defund the police and eliminate them, and that's a fact, too. I don't know about the current members, but I know the people I serve with, and that's one of the things that motivated me to be in this chair I'm in right now. So, if it don't pass, that's fine, but I want a roll call.
Oh, you'll get one, Alder.
Thank you.
All right. In just under 10 minutes, we have three Alders in the queue at the moment. Question has been called and seconded, unless that's withdrawn. Is there objection to calling the question? All right, so, all in favor of calling the question? Aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Okay. Ohovich? Ohovich is aye. Pritchett? Pritchett is?
Is that a no, Alder?
No. Pritchett is no. Tischler? Tischler is aye. Verveer? Verveer is aye. President Vidiver? President Vidiver is aye. Duncan? Duncan is aye. Evers? Evers is aye. Field? Field is aye. Figueroa Cole? Figueroa Cole is aye. Glenn? Glenn is aye. Vice President Govindarajan? Vice President Govindarajan is aye. Ughair? Ughair is aye. Harrington McKinney? Harrington McKinney is no. Langkella? Langkella is aye. Knox? Knox is no. Madison? Madison is aye. Martinez Rutherford? Martinez Rutherford is aye. Matthews? Matthews is aye. Mayor? Mayor is aye. O'Brien? O'Brien is aye. Seventeen aye.
Seventeen ayes. The question has been called. What's before us is floor amendment number two. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Okay. Ohovich? Ohovich is no. Pritchett? Pritchett is yes. Aye. Tischler? Tischler is no. Verveer? Verveer is no. President Vidiver? President Vidiver is no. Duncan? Duncan is no. Evers? Evers is no. Field? Field is no. Figueroa Cole? Figueroa Cole is no. Glenn? Glenn is no. Vice President Govindarajan? Vice President Govindarajan is no. Ughair? Ughair is no. Harrington McKinney?
Yes.
Harrington McKinney is aye. Langkella? Langkella is no. Knox? Knox is aye. Madison? Madison is no. Martinez Rutherford? Martinez Rutherford is no. Matthews? Matthews is no. Mayor? Mayor is no. O'Brien? O'Brien is no. Seventeen no. Three aye.
Seventeen nos. The floor amendment two will fail. That brings us back to the main motion of the operating budget as amended. Are there any further amendments from the floor? Seeing none. Are there any questions for staff on the operating budget overall? Seeing none. Is there any discussion on the operating budget overall? Seeing no. Oh, Figueroa Cole? Alder Figueroa Cole?
I was waiting for Mike to buzz in, but are you awake? Oh, this is not the end?
There's one more.
Okay, I'm going to say it anyway.
Feel free.
You guys. Again, thank you to staff for all the work and all the help with the amendments and all that stuff. And then I let Mike, you know, spend another 10 minutes on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So, what's before us is the operating budget as amended by the Finance Committee and this body tonight. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Register me as a no.
Will do. Alder Knox as well? All right. Thank you. So with those notes, the operating budget will pass, and that brings us to item five. And we'll ask the Finance Director and/or the Budget Director to update us on the relevant numbers for item five.
Thank you, Mayor. So what's before you, once it's introduced, is the budget resolution, which is Legisstar That would set the property tax levy at $326,666,421, which is equivalent to roughly seven mils, slightly higher than seven mils. The budget resolution includes as well the transfer, carryover levy limit authority from the prior year, which is $80,161. And it also includes a total allowable levy of $331,564,924. There's also reference in the budget resolution to three figures in the last paragraph, which is for federal tax law purposes, it sets the maximum amount of indebtedness. General obligation indebtedness is $379,62,218. Water utility revenue bond indebtedness, that's authorized, $2,345,788. And for sewer utility indebtedness reimbursed costs, $16,572,631. So that's what's before you in the budget resolution that reflects the council's decisions on the capital and operating budget, and would set the property tax levy for 2025, collected in 2026, to fund the 2026 budget. There is one paragraph that needs to be separated, so third from final paragraph, on a separate vote, which is required under Madison general ordinances, and that is, this budget does have an amount that's applied from general debt reserves to paid debt service. Under the ordinance, if the amount that's transferred to the capital projects from the general fund does not equal that amount, which it does not equal in this budget, there needs to be a separate vote to approve that. That vote needs to be approved by two-thirds vote of the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. So, President Vidiver, then, let's get a motion on number five, Legisstar 90658 altogether.
Move to adopt as defined by the Finance Director.
Moved and seconded. So, as the Finance Director said, we do need a separate vote on the eighth paragraph of the body of that resolution. And so, on that eighth paragraph, President Vidiver?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. The eighth paragraph, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll court a unanimous vote in favor of the eighth paragraph now on the underlying motion. Are there any further questions or discussion on item five? Alder Figueroa Cole?
When will the amounts be added to the, to Legisstar?
I anticipate the staff are working on those numbers now and would share them?
I'm sorry, which numbers? The numbers I just?
I just think that Legisstar is still blank, so what will the numbers?
Those will not be added until tomorrow. We'll add them tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Other questions or discussion? Alder Verveer?
Thank you very much, Mayor. As Alder Figueroa Cole anticipated, I do very sincerely want to take this opportunity to thank you, your deputy mayors, all the division department heads, and each of their respective budget contacts, but most importantly, our Finance Director, our Assistant Finance Director, the first year I can say that, with her newly well-deserved title, and each of the four budget analysts for their tremendous assistance putting this product together for all of us. It's always a pleasure every year to work with that team, especially our budget team. And on behalf of all members of the council, I just want to thank them very much for their tremendous efforts. I was very happy when I had heard that we had a record low number of floor budget amendments, be they introduced last week or introduced today, to the point that the majority of the budget analysts were able to stay home and watch us from the comfort of their respective homes. So I'm glad at least we could give them that gift at the end of this budget process. So, on behalf again of all of us, thank you. Thank you, thank you all the way around.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole? Oh, I'll give you a round of applause. Thank you very much. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. This is my fifth budget since I became an Alder, and every budget is extremely difficult. So, I, last year was probably the most difficult. But I really hope that we all had a time to reflect, once you were reviewing the budget changes and the full scope of the things that we were able to accomplish this year, and keep in mind that we added, I mean, from the things that have been a priority for me since day one, I am particularly grateful to everyone for finally getting a full service shelter opening in, at the end of next quarter, at the end of next spring, 2026. So I know we still have some funding that needs to be, it's a little gap that we need to fulfill, but I know, I'm confident that the community will pull through and we will get that accomplished. So just again, keep in mind that that is a need that this community has had for 40 years, and we finally are able, this council was finally able to move that forward. And also, as part of the amendments that we did in finance, we were able to make the violence prevention positions full-time, which is an enormous, enormous move for our community. We have that team working since 2021 as a half unit, and we know how much work they have put into our community. So I'm so grateful to all of you, to the mayor and to staff again, for those big, big milestones in our community. So, thank you to all. I just couldn't let that one go, because there has been a lot happening lately, as you know, but we also need to celebrate the little things that are so important, and we are part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
I'll be very, very brief. I just wanted to, first of all, always thank everybody for supporting the Imagination Center, but I just want to give you all some numbers for the temporary men's shelter right now and invite everyone who has not been out there to shoot me an email or get on my calendars so you can take a tour. So if you're not keeping up, the October numbers average 374 per night, and we're already averaging 337 guests for November, and we haven't, we're just getting cold. So I just want to remind you all, I appreciate everybody supporting the shelter and the additional dollar stores of shelter. So whatever you can do to ensure we get there, please.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to end with this saying, and so, I walk out of here not feeling defeated, because there's only one Alder that knows my heart, my spirit, and where I stand. But tonight was the first time that collectively, even though we disagreed, there are members on this body that we have not even had communication with. And the challenge is, if you can challenge us, and so I can say what's on my heart and walk away, and still be a part of a functioning body. So I would say to those who walk past me, and I walk past, and we don't have community conversation, we need to look at ourselves. One of the things that we attended, the presentation, was it Tuesday night or last week, where I was sitting at a table with two people who I had never had a conversation with, and I was able to hear what was important to them. And I am grateful for doing that, because if we are a body, we might not agree, but we are a body elected by the people. And if I am making a statement, that means that I have had calls, and I have had constituents calling and talking to me, as you have. And so as we walk out of this space today, I would say that whether we all agree or not, is that we should not be disagreeable, because we were elected to serve the people of our respective districts. And as Alder Madison says, is that we don't agree, but our conversation is always there. And so, walk away and just think about what happened tonight, and if you are one of the ones that walked past another Alder without having conversation, or if you are the one that always points and criticizes, just start looking at the mirror at yourself. Because as we are moving into this space, we're going to have some hard challenges that we're not going to always agree, but we don't have to be disagreeable. And I need to end on that.
Thank you, Alder. Remind us that we do have an item six, so don't get too eager. Is there any objection if on item six? Is there any objection if on item five, I speak briefly from the chair? Seeing no objection, I just want to add my thanks as well and share with you all something that I said to management team this morning to publicly recognize in that forum the great work that our budget team has done. Obviously, in every agency, there's a tremendous number of staff that work to put together both their capital and then their operating proposals. And at that, I want to recognize the hard work that goes on in each and every agency. And to follow my directions, thank you, Chief, on what can be asked for and what can't be. But I do want to especially recognize the work in finance because not only did they do all of the work to put together this year's budget and budget process, they also did a tremendous amount of work over the past several years to educate the public, this body, and the entire management team about the dynamics of the budget, and to help us all move into a situation where we can not only be planning on a five-year time horizon for our capital budget, but that we can also be doing the same for our operating budget. And I think that that will put the City of Madison in a much stronger financial position going forward. I already seeing it have a positive impact in agencies and in how we think collectively about our budget. So I'm also thankful for the work that finance has done to create the perhaps longly-named popular annual financial report, which its purpose is transparency, and you would think that it would have a plain language name, but no. But it is actually an excellent tool that is designed to make our budget more transparent to the residents of Madison. And that was a significant lift. They're doing all of this at the same time as they're helping to facilitate us moving farther into the results Madison process where we will use data to inform our budget decisions and a whole slew of other management decisions as well. So I think the finance team deserves an immense amount of credit, and I would ask you to join me in giving them another round of applause. Finally, thank you to all of you, particularly those of you who engaged early and often in the budget process. It will be a matter of just a few months before we start again, so it's never too late to think about what you want to do for next year, or never too early, I guess. That said, item five has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Alder Figueroa Cole?
Just to make sure that people understand that the November meeting is virtual.
We're getting to that, Alder.
Well, I thought we were done.
No. On item five, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record unanimous vote in favor on item five. And now we will go to item six, which is Legisstar 86558, confirming the Madison Common Council meeting formats through March 24th of 2026. President Vidiver?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. We'll note that the 11:25 meeting is an all-virtual meeting. Do not come to this room. No one will be here. We will all be on Zoom. But the successive meetings between December and March are scheduled to be hybrid at this time. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item six? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote. And now, Alder Ohovitch, it's your turn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned.